I'd like to call to order the meeting for municipal housing agency governing board for August 26th. I'll ask the clerk to take role, please.
County?
Here.
Coleman.
Moore.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Mahaffey.
Here.
Hensley.
Meyer.
Here.
All right, item two is accepting the Greater Iowa Housing Assistance Corporation reporting requirement to provide to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, regarding grant to Iowa, Central Iowa Shelter and Services in approving acceptance of remaining grant fund balance. Board communication number thirteen dash four twenty-four. Is there anyone to speak to that, again, that's accepting that reporting requirement? All right, could we have a motion?
Moved.
It's been moved. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item three is authorizing the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments pursuant to the five-H portable homeownership program for the following. A is Deanna L. Carter at thirty-seven twelve thirty-seven Street, Board communication number thirteen dash four thirty-six. B is Kimberly A. Ross, known as Kimberly A. Tenborg of twenty-nine fifty State Avenue, Board communication number thirteen dash four thirty-nine. And C is Leila J. Schut of forty-one eighteen Southeast Twelfth Street, Board communication number thirteen dash four thirty-seven. Is there anybody here to speak to three, A, B, or C? Seeing none, hearing none, could we have a motion, please?
I think that's a great program. These people have been successful and cooperated and gonna now get their forgivable loan. And it's great to see that happen.
All right, thank you. It's been moved. Item three, A, B, and C. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Could we have a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
All in favor say aye. Opposed? We said adjourned. City council meeting will begin in about two minutes. All right, prior to the starting of our city council meeting, we're gonna have an invocation this evening by our own council member, Chris Coleman. Those who would like to participate with us, we would ask that you stand at this time.
Give me a second while I get my glasses, please.
Take them.
Thank you. They're cuter than mine. This is a poem from Maya Angelou. "Father, Mother, God, thank you for your presence during the hard and mean days. For then we have time to lean upon you. Thank you for your presence during the bright and sunny days. For then we can share what we have with those who have less. And thank you for your presence during the holy days. For then we are able to celebrate with you and our family and our friends. For those who have no voice, we ask you to speak. For those who feel unworthy, we ask you to pour out your love in waterfalls of tenderness. For those who live in pain, we ask you to bathe them in the river of your healing. For those who are lonely, we ask you to keep them company. For those who are depressed, we ask you to shower upon them the light of hope. Dear Creator, you, the borderless sea of substance, we ask you to give us all the world that we need the most. That that we need the most. Peace." Thank you.
We'll call this meeting to order, and I'll ask the clerk to take role, please.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
We have a forum.
Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. Councilmember Myers asked item forty-three I to be moved up to just after the consent agenda. Does anybody have any problems with that? If not, could we have a motion to approve? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item three is approving the consent agenda, and tonight those items are three through thirty-nine. Generally, these are routine items that are enacted by one roll call vote without separate discussion unless somebody either from the audience or a city council member asks to have one pulled for either further discussion or clarification. This evening, of those items, three through thirty-nine, item eleven, councilmember Moore wishes to speak, and item twenty-seven, councilmember Hensley wishes to speak and votes no.
Actually, I'm gonna vote yes. There's just a little typographical error there.
Okay. Needed to say yes rather than no. Okay. So, having said that, does anybody have any items, three through thirty-nine, that they would like to have pulled for further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a motion for the balance?
Moved.
It's been moved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes unanimously. Takes us to item eleven. Item eleven is the authorization to proceed with the acquisition of the necessary right-of-way and easements for the East Thirtieth Street and Dean Avenue intersection improvement project. Council communication number thirteen dash four thirty-two. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Really, I've pulled these discussions throughout the meetings in Laurel Hill area about the potential street closures. One thing that seemed to come to the top at every meeting was the flooding at East Thirtieth Street and Dean under heavy rain conditions. I have been down there to observe it, and if you don't have a tall four-by-four, you cannot go east on Dean from East Thirtieth Street. This project here is not gonna solve that, but if Jeb could come up, he'll be able to give us an update as to where we're at on the sewer lines and the flooding in that area.
Mayor, members of council, Jeb Bruce, city engineer, as councilman Moore mentioned, this particular project does not address the flooding issues in this area. There is in the CIP currently programmed in the out years project called Leetown Creekway Improvements. In the CIP, there's about eight-point-three million dollars that are programmed for improvements. Some of those improvements are through the fairground, and some of the improvements are south of the railroad. This winter, we'll start some of the early design in some of those projects, but it'll take a number of years to do those improvements.
So you're anticipating two years away?
It's in a five-year program in the CIP, so it'd be over five years. Two years for the first phase, and probably two and a half for the second phase.
Thanks, Jeb. I'll move eleven.
Seven, yes?
Takes us to item twenty-seven, which is approving the city manager to submit a letter to the board of directors of the Iowa Finance Authority requesting changes to the two thousand fourteen qualified allocation plan for the two thousand fourteen low-income housing tax credit, the LIHTC round. Council communications number thirteen dash four forty, Mrs. Hensley.
As the council will recall, we had a presentation on this by David Dunn. It's been probably a month or so ago. It was an excellent presentation, but it clearly underscored the issues with the new QAP that's coming out from Iowa Finance Authority. And what that will do, in effect, and this is in the letter, but my concern is, is that we need to maybe even strengthen the language and be more directive in that the impact of caps in the city of Des Moines on this type of housing. We all know that we have a difficult time getting the projects and neighborhoods, and if the quality of the building goes down, that's gonna be problematic for us in the long run. So I think it's really important that we emphasize that. Secondly, cities no longer have the same amount of input that we have had previously. If you'll recall, we used to go through and actually provide a lot of support, and there were points that were awarded. We, that's no longer a part of the QAP. We don't even have the opportunity to provide input, so I would like to see a specific comment in there that cities are allowed to provide input, even though it maybe not count towards points for the project. So I think that's extremely important, particularly with the caps going down and more requests for funding from cities. And lastly, looking at the tax credit projects on a regional basis. We talk about it, and we've had discussions at this table, that they should not just be located in Des Moines, but they should be located throughout the region. But one of the issues we have is, for example, if they wanted to do a tax credit project in Pleasant Hill, the market study would have to include the eastern side of Des Moines, the Fairgrounds neighborhood, and those are two completely different areas. So I would just like to have a comment that we need to look at them on a regional basis and not so much on a city-by-city basis, and I think that would help tremendously.
All right, anybody else have any comments?
So I would just, based upon those comments, refer that back to the city manager and community development for incorporating those in maybe a little bit more streamlined version, but just emphasizing those as well. And I don't know, Mayor, if you're gonna be there to respond at the public input meeting or not, but...
I probably will be. I have been a little discouraged about the last couple of times I've been over there, but hopefully we can get some impact on their decision-making process and allow cities to have a little bit more say-so in the process. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, we'd be happy to incorporate those comments. I think they're all right on point. It would be terrific if the mayor would be able to attend that meeting and make comments. This is a vitally important issue for the city for a whole lot of reasons, and I think your comments are very constructive, and hopefully IFA will pay attention to those. So we'll do our best to follow through as you.
Okay, thank you.
Seven, yes?
All right, that completes the consent agenda. That takes us to forty-three. I, councilmember Meyer, asked this to be moved forward, and it's from councilmember Meyer to speak regarding a letter received from Variety, the Children's Charity of Iowa regarding the naming of a proposed new playground to be built by Variety at Ewing Park. Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor. And I know there's some people in the audience here tonight that will wanna speak on this. This is a great project undertaken by Susan and Brenna, who are in the audience. It's an opportunity for Variety to get involved in building a playground over at Ewing Park. And the reason for the playground, and it's a great idea, it's one of the best things that I've been involved with since I've been on the council, is to create an all-inclusive playground that is available to all children, including children with disabilities, and the ability to play with other kids and work that magic that these playgrounds have. And so the motion tonight will be to refer for naming rights. They wanna name it after Ashley Oakland, but I think if you guys wanna, are gonna come up and speak, why don't you guys come on up and they can tell you a little bit more about where we're going with this. And in the course of moving it up, I want to save them about two and a half hours of their time, so...
Well, thank you, council, for inviting us to come tonight. As Brian mentioned, we've been working for about a year and a half on the planning for the Ashley Oakland Star Playground, which is what we're proposing for the name of the playground. Variety, the Children's Charity, would essentially be the fundraising unit for this playground. It's about a half-million-dollar project, and we are looking forward to getting started. We have already, the history behind this is Ashley Oakland was very involved, not only with Variety, the Children's Charity, but with several children's organizations. And this park would be one of a kind for the city of Des Moines, and we're happy to be a part of it.
All right, thank you very much.
So the motion tonight will be to refer to the city manager's office for the naming rights to be forwarded on to the appropriate boards and commissions. So I'll move forty-three I.
All right, that takes us back to our ordinances. Second consideration, this one, item number forty, on the vacation of three segments of street right-of-way for railroad crossing closures at Hull Avenue, Scott Avenue, and Southeast Thirty-Fourth Street crossings. Council communication number thirteen dash four forty-four. Mr. Manager, I think that we are gonna have some staff updates on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. This has been on your agenda before. Obviously, Phil Dellafield and his staff have put together a very short presentation with your patience. I'd like to have Phil kind of walk through that information for you.
Thank you, Rick. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Phil Dellafield, Community Development Department, and thank you for allowing me this brief opportunity to run through a few points that I think are important to, for consideration this evening. Are we up, Diane?
Yep.
Thank you. Just by way of background, city council has asked the staff to provide an objective analysis of the process, the proposal, and the materials that have been sent to you for consideration. This is to give an overview of the advantages or the benefits that may or may not accrue from this proposal. We are not here to advocate for any one party, but we are here to give you what we view, from your staff perspective, is the best opportunity, the best proposal for this as it moves forward. And we've strived in all instances to balance the community needs, the business, the neighborhood, rail, and city needs. So as we go forward, I'll just run through that. As you recall, we've had a lot of meetings on this. There's been a lot of effort expended. It started with a request from the city council to take a look at the issues associated with rail and traffic delays at the city. We've had a series of neighborhood meetings, council workshops. We've had one prior council meeting, and the project has evolved each and every time. Tonight, you'll hear our summary of the analysis. As we go through this, this is going to break it down into the sort of the three parts, the issue, the proposal, and the result. So very early on, we had the requests to evaluate the delays at the closing, at the crossings throughout the city, and we had a proposal from the UP that would look at Hull Avenue, Southeast Thirty-Fourth Street closures. We would look at the short-line yard power switches. We would look also at the advance warning signals. And the result with these proposals would be a net result of about twenty-five percent blockage at the streets of Hubble, Des Moines, East Grand, Capitol, East Walnut, and Dean.
You're talking about a reduction in the blocking times?
Shall I rephrase that? A reduction in time, in blockage times at those crossings. A twenty-five percent net reduction in blockage times at those crossings. And then also with the advanced warning systems that were being proposed, the ability of drivers to reroute. So here you see the map again of where those warning signals would be proposed. Their early warning signs on East University to warn of the Hubble Crossing blockage and the ability to reroute accordingly. Also, the Hull Avenue Guthrie warning signals. Again, we have a restriping and early warning on Guthrie to warn people that the road at Dixon would be closed. Then the issues in the southeast area. There's the access and traffic issues for Laurel Hill area. And one of the earliest proposals was to close Southeast Thirty-Sixth Street. That has since been revised to remove the crossing at Southeast Thirty-Sixth Street, and we have now negotiated towards a paved access road that is available twenty-four-seven, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. This is an improvement over the proposal that was more of a temporary emergency road that would actually occur on the rail right-of-way and would only be open during flood events. Laurel Hill Road would also be paved from Southeast Thirty-Fourth to Southeast Thirty-Sixth, and East Thirtieth and Dean turning lane improvements would be installed. Through these negotiations, we believe that the north-south access is maintained in the Laurel Hill area, and you have better traffic flow at East Thirtieth and Dean. So here you see the map of those improvements as well. The East Thirtieth and Dean intersection and a cul-de-sac at Southeast Thirty-Fourth Street. The access and traffic in the Hull Avenue area, we have a proposal to lengthen the East Euclid turning lane at Dixon and install turning arrows, widen Dixon and Hull Avenue intersections to allow for better truck movement, and widen Hull Avenue, again, to help with the truck movement. Dixon and Hull are able to better handle the additional truck traffic, and better traffic flow at East Euclid and Dixon are the results of these proposals. It's important, I think, at this point to note, you know, to focus on the idea that this industrial area has an opportunity here. It's a nexus of sorts. It's rail, highway, and traffic nexus, and the traffic improvements here allow for this improved flow throughout. It's important to maintain access for the industry in this area. The issue also is the quality of life issues that the Hull Neighborhood Association has raised. We think that the proposal to install a sidewalk along Delaware from Hull Avenue to Morton Avenue and the Hull Avenue pavement overlay improves conditions dramatically there, along with street trees along East Twenty-Fourth to I-235. This improved connectivity from Morton Avenue to the adjoining neighborhood, this improves connectivity to the school at Garten Elementary and the adjoining neighborhoods. And here are those improvements, as you've previously seen. And then the employment in the tax base is another issue that has been before you. The need to support the ADM plant expansion and the support for freight rail in Des Moines, and this represents a two-to-three-million-dollar expansion by ADM for the refined oil facility. There are twenty-plus rail-dependent companies that support over thirty-four-hundred jobs with fifty-one million dollars in taxable valuation that raise two-point-nine million dollars in annual taxes. This is the foundation for growth in the northeast industrial area. Without these jobs and these improvements, the whole community suffers. We believe that this is a reasonable approach. These are a few of the example businesses that we're talking about. Twenty rail-supporting companies, thirty-four-hundred jobs, again, five-point, fifty-one million in taxable valuation and two-point-nine annual taxes, and this is the industrial area. Nearly thirteen-hundred areas, over eight million square feet of industrial buildings, two-hundred-and-forty-seven in separate parcels, with two-hundred-and-forty-seven million dollars in total assessed value. These are small, medium, and large companies. And then the environment and street maintenance, and again, the proposal is to support freight rail in Des Moines. And rail being the most environmentally friendly and fuel-efficient mode of freight available at this time, it minimizes truck traffic on the streets that are taxpayers-supported in Des Moines. The short-line rail yards, six thousand of truckloads of goods off of the local roads per day. And these also reduce emissions and street maintenance that the taxpayers pay for. Safety is an important consideration. In Iowa, there have been twenty-four rail crossing accidents so far, forty-three in two thousand and twelve, and forty-one in two thousand and eleven. Again, the proposal is to reduce the number of crossings and reduce the number of opportunities for accidents. The effort doesn't stop here. There are also opportunities that are in the future. The Northeast Des Moines Bicycle-Pedestrian Corridor feasibility study is one such opportunity. This proposal examines the existing demographics and land uses and connectivity in Northeast Des Moines. We hope to identify potential alternative mode connections between the Gailey-Wilson Trail and downtown urban core. Also, the study of the feasibility of on-and-off-street bicycle and pedestrian facilities, including rails with trails corridors along the UP line. There are others. The Northeast Bicycle-Pedestrian Corridor feasibility also hopes to look at the Iowa Clean Air attainment program. This is a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar study with a two-hundred-thousand-dollar ICAP grant that can be requested. The goal is related to the ICAP purpose of improving future air quality by studying the opportunities for connectivity. And then finally, the planning effort that we're talking about is the best practices study with the railroad and community interface. These hope to identify additional best practices and potential applicability between, to balance automobile, bicycle, rail, truck, and pedestrian mobility. This also would look to best practices associated with buffer in residential areas and encouraging rail-based economic development. There is also the MPO rail port study that is already out on the streets. The RFP has been released. We believe these two studies that I've just mentioned would feed into this, take information from those two studies as well as information from the rail port study to help us increase the feasibility of rail in the community. Industrial rail ownership and usage analysis, freight impediment and infrastructure analysis. These three studies lay the foundation for grants and additional improvements in the area. And in summary, this project represents a two-point-one million-dollar investment in public infrastructure with another seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar investment in power grade switches by the UP, and it supports over thirty-four-hundred existing jobs and lays the foundation for future growth. We believe it strengthens the tax base and supports the environment and safety, and it has an ongoing work program that continues into the future to find other opportunities for improvement in the neighborhood. And I welcome any questions.
Anybody have any questions up here? All right, I think we should go ahead and open up our hearing. I'm sure there are those of you out there who would like to speak. I would go ahead, I think, and I think we, individual here from Union Pacific, let him go ahead and speak, but then we've got a number of others who would probably like to. Could we see a show of hands of those who would like to speak on this issue? All right, so we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Okay, so let's figure everybody will get, you know, like, three minutes, plus minus. We'll try to stay in there. We look forward, as always, to our We try to stay in there. We look forward, as always, to our citizen comments and input, whatever it is that you have, but we would ask, as we not hear repetition, but concerns, and maybe help us as we have some discussions with all the parties on what some solutions might be and how we might try to approach them. But let's go ahead and start. Give us your name and address, sir.
Mike Blackley, Union Pacific Railroad, Omaha, Nebraska, manager of public projects. Two years ago, the mayor requested the Union Pacific to participate in a meeting with city staff and the Eastside Council members to discuss how to reduce the delays to the Eastside residents at the public crossings at Dean to Easton. We began with two goals: to maintain the best possible service, promoting safety for our customers in Des Moines, minimize the inconvenience to the neighbors with being reminding of their concerns, and after 24 months of analysis, review, modification, we agree with the city staff that this solution will help achieve those goals. The plan addresses city and Eastside concerns about traffic delays. UP is installing nine power-operated switches on the west end of Short Line Yard to reduce delays at the public crossings during train movements in and out of the yard. This installation will remove the amount of delay at the crossings between Easton and Dean by approximately, conservatively, 25%, with greater reduction expected. This benefit is for approximately 19,000 vehicles a day that travel through that corridor. By closing Hall Avenue, it removes business traffic from Delaware Street to West Hall Avenue, improves the ability for local and through vehicles of Hall Avenue and Delaware Street intersection where truck staging has occurred, installation of sidewalks for the pedestrians, asphalt paving of Hall Avenue east of the interstate and additional paving, or I'm sorry, reduction of the train horns in the area. All these improvements will certainly benefit the area, improving the quality of life. Closing 34th Street provides additional capacity to handle current rail traffic for the Des Moines customers. During community meetings, the residents of Southeastside pointed out flooding issues thus resulting in access improvements using the 35th Street for Emergency Access Roadway, which will be open continuously. The installation of new crossing surface at 36th Street and the relocation of the lights and gates from 34th Street to 36th. The asphalt paving of Laurel Hill and the area will notice the reduction of train horns due to the 34th Street being closed. All these factors are enhancing public safety for the pedestrian motorists. The two closures provide enough additional rail capacity to allow Des Moines to participate in future expansion of existing businesses and developing of new industry, keeping the door open to rail benefits all of Des Moines, also the state for future rail service. Good rail service is critical for communities that want to attract new business. Rail is the most economical, fuel-efficient, and least polluting of all transportation modes and is supported with private funds, not taxpayer dollars. UP has invested $15 million in the Des Moines area in the last few years of improvements. Union Pacific takes thousands of, well, 6,000 trucks is pointed out, off the local roadways every day. Currently, we are the most environmental, we are the most environmentally ability to transport goods within the United States. Iowa communities don't have enough rail service and are spending millions of dollars to build rail facilities. Procedures with these, proceeding with these closures will help Des Moines protect and improve the rail infrastructure. It will also address longstanding concern about traffic delays on the East side. There's been a lot of discussion about the need for broader planning to address the infrastructure in Des Moines. UP is 100% in support of that idea and looking forward to planning into the future to keep Des Moines viable, to attract new industry, and the ability to expand its facilities. This will mean jobs for now and adding more jobs in the future. Currently, UP is in the process of hiring 30 employees in the chief facility here in Des Moines, and that's local people within the Des Moines area. We can't predict how, what our future business will look like, the rail industry responds to the economy. We will learn how unpredictable that can be, but based on our experience in the last decade and based on studies by the US DOT, we can predict that the business will increase. The proposal in front of you addresses the current rail capacity in Des Moines and will significantly reduce delays for 19,000 daily drivers on the East side. Approval will let us begin to talk about the future rail serve development in Des Moines. We look forward in participating in those discussions. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Mike. All right. If we could, we'd ask that folks kind of who additionally want to speak, maybe if you could sort of line up over on this side and we can kind of keep everybody moving along. And as you come up, I guess we have one speaker, right? 2, 3.
3.
4.
6, 7? You guys speak? All right, come forward. Give us your name, address.
I'm John Thomas, president of Fairmont Park Neighborhood Association. I live on 2658 Boyd Street, which is in this area. I asked some of the UP people last time when I was here what longevity was for the railroad at the time. They didn't answer the questions. I wonder if they got any answers for me today. I wonder where they was at in 1975 when they had a chance to merge with the rock out of railroad, and they backed out. So what's their longevity for here now? You got any ideas? Anybody?
All right. We'll, we're not going to have a debate from the stand, John, but I think we'll register that. Maybe we'll have them respond at the end if they want to make comments on any of it, but longevity of the railroad would be one we want them to address.
Okay. Also, I've got a park in the neighborhood area that I'd like to get rebuilt. Maybe the UP could throw some money in, and ADM could throw some money in to help get that going.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Jim Peroli, Archer Daniels Midland Company, and a Des Moines resident, 1935 East Euclid Avenue. And I'm here today to really talk about the economic development side of what this kind of a project means for a facility like what we have here at ADM in Des Moines and elsewhere. A yes vote for road and rail infrastructure improvement supports the residential areas of Des Moines and future industrial development. Support from the community and the city council supports current employment, supports future investment, which means that area businesses can expand and hire more employees, supports agriculture, the largest contribution sector for Iowa's GDP. And this is a necessary step forward to secure industrial and manufacturing jobs in Des Moines. Efficient freight rates to destination markets give suppliers and producers, including both industry and farmers in Iowa, better selling prices. Without infrastructure improvements, facilities like our soybean plant in Des Moines are landlocked. That means no more investment and no more expansion. You heard earlier, we have, you know, several million dollars worth of expansion projects on the table right now. Those are just within the facility, within our soybean oil refining plant, but that's also connected to additional rail track infrastructure that we would be building in association with that. So if the roads, you know, if the road doesn't close, we don't build the rail, we don't expand the oil refinery. So those kind of projects are linked together. So continued support for projects like this, that are thoroughly and holistically developed with midterm and long-term impacts in mind, will continue to put Des Moines, Iowa at the forefront of the most desirable communities in the nation from a business and living perspective. So I, you know, I also heard earlier that this is, you know, a balancing of automotive and truck and rail traffic concerns, which I think is very important. You know, the road infrastructure improvements need to happen in that area for, you know, for the increased truck traffic and the increased rail traffic. And, you know, I also heard about, I thought it was a great way to say that this develops a buffer between rail and industrial zones from street traffic and residential areas, and I, you know, I think it's important to separate rail cars and trucks wherever we can, so. Do you have any questions?
I have one, Mayor.
Sure.
Jim, ADM currently owns land north and south of Hall Avenue, correct?
That's correct.
If we're to close that crossing, is it ADM's intent to try and purchase that section of Hall Avenue?
Not that, not that I know of. I mean, there's, you know, it's something that we've looked at with the UP. I have the map with me tonight, but we've talked about taking a track out that crosses the road right there and redoing that to straighten it off and get, straighten it out and getting it off their main line and go across the property we own and onto the existing track and into our plant.
So ADM would not be opposed to a viaduct over that area?
The viaduct question isn't really one that I can answer. I mean, I'm, you know, the plans I've seen, it would be on top of houses on one side and in our plant on the other side, so I don't really think I'm qualified to answer it from an engineering perspective.
Just a simple question. Would they be opposed to a viaduct?
Right, right there at Hall Avenue?
Yep.
It doesn't, it doesn't seem to be the best plan, no.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name's Don Kran. I live at 2912 Dean Avenue. I have to write this down because I've got CRS. Union Pacific's not telling the truth. They claim that the rail takes trucks off the streets. Common sense says it is not true. If you bring more product to the city, the product must be offloaded to more trucks, not less trucks. That means more trucks will be using the city streets. True, it may take traffic off the state highways, but not the city streets. Right now, the Union Pacific frequently blocks, breaks the law by blocking East 34th Street for hours at a time. If it were a person blocking the street, the person would be ticketed, and if it happened over and over and over, he would probably be put in jail. Union Pacific thinks closing 34th Street is the solution to the problem. The majority of people do not agree with this solution. ADM and Union Pacific also want to close Hall Avenue. They think the solution is another, is another problem. The majority of the people do not agree with this solution either. Little consideration has been given to the effect. These closure will be on businesses and lives of residents. All I hear is what the citizens of Des Moines can do for the Union Pacific. Why doesn't the Union Pacific think what it can do for the city of Des Moines? People of Des Moines have already given. If the Union Pacific was really thinking about the East side of Des Moines, they would consider a real solution. They would use their own resources and build an overpass. For once, it would be, not be established, Eastside businesses and residents who are giving, who are doing the giving. We have also heard about kids who live on the East side of the tracks on Hall Avenue, on the west side of Hall Avenue. The ones on the East side go to school on the East side, the ones on the west side go to the school on the west side. What about the kids that go to Valley or Capital View and East High and live on the East side of the tracks? Nothing is said about them, are they? And finally, what has ever happened to majority rules? The majority of the people do not want this. You've got 8 or 10 people like the Union Pacific and ADM, and if they want to do something, let them put their resources together and build a viaduct over Hall Avenue and build it over Dean Avenue and 34th Street. And I've got one other thing to say. If you permanently close a street, can it be, really be opened? I don't think so. If it's permanently closed, thank you.
I'm Sharon Cooper with Fairground Neighborhood Association. I'm at 2838 Logan Avenue. I'm here pleading for you to give us an overpass over any one of those streets, Hubble to Dean. We had a resident that called me to tell me that, he called an ambulance one night because he needed an ambulance really bad. He heard the ambulance coming, he heard a train, he heard the ambulance stop. His heart dropped. Eventually, the ambulance got to him, but he didn't know if it would get there in time. And I'm just really, really pleading that you would give us an overpass, because our residents are getting up in age and they really need to have that safety net. And I also have some more signatures. I have 94 more that I'd like on record.
I'll move to receive and file.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
My name is Suzie Forkner, 2924 East 22nd Street. I'm opposed to this. Christine Hensley, you were upset the other day on TV that Grand Avenue is going to be closed until November. Like your fellow councilman, Mr. Mahaffey, it's just a minor inconvenience. Well, it's not a minor inconvenience for us. It's a permanent inconvenience for us. I don't think you understand that, Mr. Mahaffey. It's permanent. Just, once it's done, it's done. It'll never be undone. And this thing about the kids have to go to Garten if they live east of the tracks, if they have to go to Cattell, if they live west of the tracks, there's a thing called open enrollment in Des Moines. I don't know, you guys have been out of school for a while, so I don't know if you know that, but it's open enrollment. My grandkids live East 14th and Tiffin. They go to Garten and Goodroll. So my daughter has to bring them across Hall Avenue every day. Now, it's going to be a little minor inconvenience, permanently, to have to go down 14th to Euclid to 29th, up and back and forth before she can ever go to work, and she works at East 33rd and Easton. It's a little minor inconvenience for all of you people. I don't know that any of you have gone over and seen any of the areas that are affected. You haven't gone to any of the neighborhood meetings. Mr. County, Mr. Moore have gone to one of our neighborhood meetings. I haven't seen anybody else at a neighborhood meeting for the Fairmont neighborhood to come, be concerned about it, even take questions, ask anything. You're kind of like you are right now. You're ignoring the person that's up here talking. You're down looking at your papers. You don't really care. Once again, I ask that this city council does something for its citizens, not for big business. The citizens make this city, not big business. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dana Newkirk, and I live at 2700 East 38th Street. I brought pictures. First picture here. Let's turn this on. I don't want this counting against my time. Yep. Let's get these up. What you doing here?
It's coming. Let's get them focused.
Okay. Now, what this is, this is not a tale of two cities. This is a tale of one city, where the west side has a book of contents and the east side has none. This is Flor Drive. They have planters, they have flowers, they're beautiful. This is our side of town. This is university. This is a cement sea. It needs to be paraged. It's not very welcoming. This is over in Waveland Trail. You have a bridge there that has retaining walls, a mowed landscape, bike paths, lovely trees. This is another view of that. It has architectural side guards, and it has black railings with finials. It's very nice. It's very lovely. There is a sidewalk that leads to the bike path even. It's lovely. This is what we have on our side of town. It's all cement with some kind of red resin barrier and steel railings that look kind of like a prison. This is the side. Our grass is never mown, and down in here, this is a shovel, and there's all kinds of workman's stuff thrown in here, and nothing's ever really mown or taken care of, and there's no steps down to our bike path. What there is is a tiny swatch here that's mowed on our bridge there at Easton. And the grass here, the grass is up here taller than I am, so I'm sorry, I couldn't get a pretty view of the, of the creek. Underneath our bridge, we have rock. We don't have any nice, pretty walls, retaining walls made out of anything that's attractive. We have animals crawling in and out of this stuff, by the way. Okay, then catty corner from our, from our bridge is this, and it's been sitting there with the tanks in it. It was a service station of some kind and a little store. But what's really fun about this area is the really thick, and you can't really get a good picture of the jagged this area is the really thick, and you can't really get a good picture of the jagged edges of the glass that's been swept to the side, that sweep all the way out to the sidewalk where the kids cross through to go to school on our side of town. And all along the sidewalk there, the, the glass is safety glass, so it's an inch and a half or so thick. And if you fell on it, if you were pushed on it, and it's been this way for two years, if you were pushed on it, this glass does not break. And these people have not been held responsible for any of this. This is what we get on our side of town. Now, all we're asking is to have an overpass so that we don't have to drive miles out of our way because our money is important to us because we don't have a lot of it. We're working class people. And we're told we get a lot of nice things. Those are the nice things that we get. All we want is an overpass. We live, our neighborhoods butt up to this. Your neighborhoods, many of you, your neighborhoods do not butt up against this. You don't see this. You have a nice bridge with a lovely thing with finials on the edges of your bridges over your creeks. We have steel, we have bars that look like people came from prison and built it. That's what we get on our side of town. This is what we continually get on our side of town. And what we want is an overpass for the sidewalk where people can cross back and forth safely. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sri Mortis. I'm here representing Key Paul Avenue Open. First of all, I'd like to say, just go over a few basic facts because some members of this board continue to deny certain facts. Number one, dead ending streets that connect neighborhoods is what is being proposed here, and that is not what urban centers should be doing to create sustainable neighborhoods. Walkability will be destroyed because the detours around the tracks are a mile in each direction. Now, walkability is something that maybe some of you may not understand. Mayor County and I know Mr. Moore, we're at Jeff Speck's presentation. Connectedness and walkability is a real, real sign of an emerging urban center. What you're doing is the opposite by proposing to dead end neighborhoods and cut us off. Hall Avenue is an avenue that is relied upon by bicyclists, people who walk. I have picked up people with their strollers and their babies off Hall Avenue because they're trying to get to the other side of the tracks to family to babysit. That's a reality that I experience almost every week. I'd also like to point out that dead ending the neighborhoods east and west of the tracks make life very, very tedious on lots of different levels. And if you don't live over here and if you haven't taken time to sort of walk through or drive through some of the alternatives that we're being given, then you probably don't really appreciate how tedious it makes daily life. It's not a small inconvenience, and in fact, it will impact, this closure will impact hundreds and hundreds of families. It's not a small inconvenience to just a few people, Mr. Mahaffey. Allowing Union Pacific to be winner take all and not insist that they behave like a contributing member to the community, sitting at the table, working out win-win solutions and paying their fair share is a poor case study that flies in the face of good urban planning. Giving away public space to big business so they can expand their capacity and profit margins is another futile attempt at convincing us that trickle-down economics works. As we hand over more and more to them, what do we get in return? History is replete with examples. In fact, look at local history of Firestone, who has used the most often fake threat to leave if they don't get what they want. What do we get in return? We get more layoffs, more part-time employment, lower wages, and fewer benefits like healthcare or pension plans or none at all. That is life as we know it. If you support this proposal by Union Pacific, then you are drawing, you are driving down the sustainability and potential for, for people in our neighborhoods, and you are kowtowing to business as usual. And speaking of growth, as we as a city fall over ourselves with enthusiastic slaps in the back over the growth and development of East Village all the way to Gateway West, the beautiful Floor Drive, what happens to the east side? Zero planning in decades, sophisticated 21st century urban planners would throw up red flags and designate us as a sacrifice zone. That's what you're creating. We have a big opportunity to change the brown-blooded industrial space into a seamless connecting green space that could be a boon for the east side. What if there was a revenues, revenue-producing overpass with an observation deck looking down over the active rail yard, and kids and their families could watch cars being loaded and coupled and engines pushing and pulling goods? What other businesses and people might that attract? Has anyone ever asked that question or a myriad of other potentials? Where is the research? Where is the planning? Where are the ideas? Mrs. Hensley, you did publicly decry a temporary closing? Perhaps you can now begin to understand our desperate attempt to explain how this plays out. Is it really too much to ask? Step back. Don't do business as usual. Create a great case study. Let's create a seamless green place where people will come to our neighborhood that has probably attracted other businesses instead of going out on Interstate 80 to Train Land USA. We have a better potential.
My name is Christina Wallace, and I am part of the Fairground Neighborhood Association. And the Union Pacific Railroad has never once addressed us for opinion or anything.
I'm Cindy Raymond from the Laurel Hill area. You know, over the meetings, we have discussed an awful lot. There's been a lot of disagreements on, you know, what can happen, what should happen. I've heard the remark that every time we get up here, that we say the very same thing. Well, mostly it's because that's exactly how we see it. That's exactly how our neighborhood sees it. And, you know, you can't change the truth of that area. The truth is the truth. I don't feel that you're asking Union Pacific months and years ago now to solve a problem has been done. It hasn't been done. All it is doing is creating other problems. Now, I was a little late. I don't know. I got a call today from Bob Mahaffey, and I thank you very much, telling me that there was a somewhat update on this plan. Was that given before I got here?
Yes.
Okay. And I was thinking about that this afternoon, and my big concern is that, personally, I just think that any changes that are made in any of these areas should be done before any crossings are closed, if they are closed. And I think that you would realize that if those changes were made that are going to improve the traffic flow on a regular basis, that you wouldn't need to close them. I think that it would make a big, big difference if Union Pacific updates their yards with these switches they're talking about. Another thing is, you know, they're saying that it will make the trains move faster. Well, I can't see that in my area because there's a 90-degree turn coming from the yard that's up north of us. And then as you go through my neighborhood, there's another turn that is very sharp there. So the train has to slow down. There is not a fast train through my neighborhood. So it's not going to improve the speed of the trains. So to me, that just says it's being done to be done. But if you are going to close something, why close it when even in, what is it, 2040, only 60% is going to be blocked? 40% use of something is a hell of a lot of use. There is no way that you can justify that in your minds to take 100% use away from something when it can be used a good percentage of the time. I know that some of you have come up against the problem with 63rd Street. Well, and how inconvenient that is for everyone. Well, think about how inconvenient it is when you only have one way out of the neighborhood or two ways out of the neighborhood if you're sure of it. So just think about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy.
My name is Valerie Madison. I got this, this got feedback. And I live at 2716 Sampson. And I've got a few questions here. That's why I wasn't too sure if I was going to speak or not today. The gentleman who first spoke, I'm hoping he misspoke when he said the road at Dixon would be closed. If I remember correctly, this is always about Delaware. Also, I questioned 19,000 trucks. I have not seen 19,000 trucks in that area, I'm talking Hall naturally. Within the last couple of weeks, traveling over the very rough railroad tracks on Hall, I, we got stopped by some individuals who were looking like they were going to repair the tracks. They were measuring them, whatever. And I had my window down, and I says, "Oh, are you going to repair these horrible tracks?" And he goes, "We sure hope so." I don't think he realized I've been fighting some of this. So anyway, I thought that was an interesting comment from a United Pacific person. Also, the train horn, in the past, I've discussed this being blared 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning, and we've been informed that it's a federal law. When I left the last city council meeting two weeks ago, I happened to notice a train crossing. Gee, there was no horn. So they can't tell me that they blare that horn all the time. There has been many times that the train has not been warning traffic or people that they're cutting across. 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, they like to though. Also, the numbers on the train accidents, I'm very curious. They'll seem very high. I'm curious, is this Des Moines, Iowa, or nationwide? I've not have heard of too many train accidents, except some recently down in rural Iowa. Question on an accident, how about Quebec who just had a train derail that was 40 miles of disaster? Houses burning, people dying in their beds. Now, I know we're closer than 40 miles, but hopefully that would never happen in our side of town. Green Place, I appreciate the person mentioning the Green Place. I'm old enough, I hate to admit it, but I remember a baseball field on Hall Avenue. And there's kids who need that to go to. The, those, what, small neighborhood parks or whatever. And, you know, the kids on my side of Delaware who go to Garten are really, really going to be missing a lot. They play after school at Garten. There's nothing there. Even a small little grassy area would be, I, I would put up with broken windows to see kids play baseball. Last word, viaduct. Thank you.
Marty Mock, 2701 Arthur. I also am standing here on behalf of Northeast Neighbors, who has taken a vote to support the neighborhoods in not closing these particular crossings. I listened to Mr. Delphil's presentation. I was looking to see the new deal, and I didn't see much of any new deal that came out of his presentation. I did note the earliest part of that said that they were bringing objective analysis, that they were not advocating for any one party. Yet, the entire presentation advocated for one side and spent very little time regarding the residents that were being affected by the closing of this particular crossing on Hall Avenue. The problem with any kind of presentation when you're taking one side is that you can use figures, you can use statistics, you can paint a picture, you can dream a dream, but the reality is you cannot control what the future has. And that's the problem with the presentation that was done. I do believe the city should look into the possibility of develop, to dividing economic development from community development. There should be some portion of the city that's advocating for citizens' rights instead of having one department that's advocating only seemingly for a business rights here. One of the mentions was, is the fact that the issues of safety. And one of the speakers brought up that issue of safety and said, "Well, what safety, what problems we had here?" Again, it was a false promise. If you reduce crossings, then you have safety. And by keeping the safety, the crossings open, you'll have a safe crossing. I mean, if you won't have a safe crossing. So we should be closing these crossings. The reality is, you're missing one point. A viaduct over a crossing provides both access and safety. You don't have train wrecks over viaducts. Another interesting fact I found was the, the number of trucks that would be pulled off the road by rail cars. Okay, you may have less congestion, you may have less pollution, but you also have a number of these trucks who come into our city. They spend money on, on restaurants, they spend money on motels, they spend money on shopping, they oftentimes then bring their families into the city. I don't know that we have a good push on the fact that we're trying to remove trucks from our economy. Actually, I think they will probably help us economically better than the railroads. Again, it comes down to a final question, the first question that we had. What was the purpose of the letter in the first place? The purpose of the letter was so that we'd have easier access, not be able to wait at crossings in a longer period of time. The answer for the railroad was the fact, well, we close the crossing, you don't have to wait. That's, that's the answer. As it comes down to final analysis, there is not an increase in what's going to happen to, to benefit the residents. We've actually had a dog and pony show of why this is going to improve the railroad and ADM. I appreciated Mr. Moore's questions about what's going to happen to Hall after it's closed. Does ADM want it? There's a long period of silence there. We need to actually set this whole process aside. The mayor asked a number of times in these hearings, "I will vote for this now until I can see some improvements, see what they can come, what's been brought to the table." Mr. Mayor, I think it's time for you to vote no. They've brought nothing new to the table. Thank you.
I guess I could quickly ask if you people wanted to respond to, there were a couple of questions early on. I think one had to do with the longevity of the railroad. I think that John asked. There were a couple others that had to do with some things about helping out with some parks and I think maybe also some statements about walkable, green neighborhoods and those kinds of things.
The Union Pacific's been in this community through other railroads and through other names of railroads for 151 years. They've got, we presently have 175 employees in the Des Moines area. We are presently hiring 30 more. That'll put us up over 200. We continue presently to invest in the city of Des Moines and the infrastructure. We do have currently a construction project going on through the Dean Avenue up to Hall Avenue area on the west side of the tracks. The project's pretty much critical to our continued growth in the Des Moines community. We support the projects in Des Moines. We have a foundation that supports projects in Des Moines. We work with the community endeavors for projects for infrastructure and beautification. We, we pretty much are open to suggestions. We've worked through a lot of these issues with the city for what's needed and where we're heading in the future and look forward to doing the rail planning process with the city to move it forward and help us continue to grow also.
Right.
Thank you.
Anybody have any other questions? Let's go ahead and close the hearing and ask council whether we have any discussion take place here at the table. Anybody? Bob?
Well, I understand, I think some of the people are hearing what they want to hear and not what they're actually hearing. And Valerie there, I know she has a little difficulty hearing, but the 1,900 cars is not on Hall, Hall is all those trans, the crossings through University bound to, to Dean where the cars cross. About 2,300 cars, I think. About 2,300 cars, I think, a day, last I heard, do we have on Hall? And the 6,000 trucks a day that come off of the highways and that. We know the problems we've had with federal government and the financing of repairs and that on our roadways. It's not our local streets that we've had all this problem because the city has found that throughout their capital improvements and that, they continue to improve the streets in our city. When you compare Fleer Drive with a crossing at Hall, you got all the people from outside using the airlines and that coming into our city. And we want to maintain a visual impact on them when they come. They want to get an idea of what our city's like. And you don't have, but very few cars compared to what goes up and down Fleer Drive as far as the traffic on various streets. We have, keep in mind that the, you know, 30 employees here, what did the, what was it, Microsoft add? How many employees in Altuna?
Facebook.
About 19, oh, Facebook, what'd they have, 19, 20 employees that they're adding and figured out? It was about a half a million dollars per employees, what the state was granting them to employ those people. And here, they're putting money back into the city of Des Moines as far as the changing of the streets and trying to accommodate the trucks that come in for ADM and to make a additional route or additional space along the south side of Hall so those trucks can offset there so that they're not in the way of those other businesses and that that need to have their trucks in and out. I think that as they look to future expansion as far as the rails and that, they're going to have to have additional ability, put in tracks and that for those businesses coming in who want rail. If we don't have the capacity to serve those businesses, those businesses will go elsewhere. And not just the tax base, but also the potential jobs will go elsewhere too. So I think we need to continue to look at the overall picture. I do admit that it'd be a minor inconvenience to go four or five blocks north or south and have a safer crossing than what you do have at Hall. And that, they talk about the accidents. There's been, what, six people killed at intersections so far this year in the state of Iowa? So I look at this as a safety issue as well because every crossing is an opportunity for an accident to occur. I realize we have to have them, but we ought to keep it to a minority if we can to try to protect our residents and that as much as possible. So those are my beginning comments, Mr. Mayor.
Skip?
I'd just like to remind everybody, the third reading of this vacation ordinance is scheduled for September 23rd.
Anything else? Mr. Coleman?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments to make because I've tried to spend some time studying this and make sure that I continue to understand it. I want to apologize, especially for the person who spoke thinking that maybe some of us were disregarding what she said because we were reading and doing things up here. I can promise you, I looked over at my colleague and we were looking at the petition that had just been submitted. We all have drawings and pictures of the area and we're trying to do our best to study this. The one thing that I want to say, and I'm certain that there's going to be a fair number of people that disagree with me, but I want to make sure that people understand this issue and why I'm voting from this perspective. I want to make sure that we've addressed the problems to the degree that we can that have been voiced or the opportunities that we have to put some improvements in our city. I understand that the people that live directly east or west of this closure carry the burden for an improvement that will benefit a vast number of citizens around the area, and we regret that. And that's never easy to do to a group of people. But I want you to be sure that I'm confident that this is a solution to real problems. And a couple of people made mention of the fact that, hey, because nothing has changed or nothing's improved in this process, maybe we ought to take a step back and not pass it. I just want to point out a couple of things. At our last meeting, it was mentioned that nobody had ever really been specific about the reduction of the delays. We never heard it from UP. Tonight, we did. He was here, he mentioned a 25% reduction in blockage time. That's what people asked for and we have it on tape. We've worked hard to make sure, especially on the southeast side, near Laurel and the cemetery out there. That's had my attention particularly because I thought a month ago, those plans were kind of soft. And as our engineering department looked at it, here's what we've done that's different than just a month ago. We're going to retain 36th Street, southeast 36th Street. It's no longer going to be closed. In fact, it's going to be 24/7, an access road that's there. Before, a month ago, it wasn't paved and it wasn't open 24/7. It was a gated area that could be opened by a key from the public works department. And I know a bunch of us responded based on the neighbors' input that that was not satisfactory, and we've changed it. The mayor helped push to change that. We're going to pave Laurel Hill Road, and we have improvements at the 30th and Dean Turning Lane. Those are all changes from the last month because of the input. We've talked about what's happening at Hall Avenue. We're going to lengthen the turning lanes to make it easier. We're going to widen Dixon and Hall. We're going to widen Hall, Dixon to ADM. We're trying to do everything that we can to make sure that as the traffic is necessarily rerouted, it can be as smooth and quick and safe as it possibly could. All improvements since a month ago. Quality of life in that area. We were challenged to figure out how we could make this some kind of an improvement for the people that live right up and down Hall. We're installing sidewalks along Delaware from Hall to Morton. Hall Avenue pavement overlay, we're going to fix the street over there and give it a whole generation of being safe, beautiful, and easy to drive on. We're going to plant trees from 24th to I-235 along Hall to beautify the area, improve connectivity. A lot of people have used the term greening it up, and that's what we're attempting to do. New strategies that did not exist a year ago that we're working to implement. I really am, I'm not ashamed that we're trying to work on behalf of some companies in here. We're not working on them at the expense of our citizens. We're working on them on behalf of our citizens. When I talk to people around our city, they want jobs. They're sick of the economic condition we've been in the last five or six years. And as we pointed out today, and a couple of people did a minute ago, this isn't changing some kind of economic development that's a great headline. These are places that are going to employ people. We heard from two representatives where they're underway right now to hire 30 new people. I hope they come from these neighborhoods. And the ADM additional people from their $2 to $3 million expansion. This is important for us that we have jobs. Those are the improvements that I wrote down that are new since a month ago. Somebody challenged us that if it hasn't improved, we shouldn't vote for it. Actually, what we said is, we're going to continue to vote for it if it improves to the degree that we want. And I believe this continues to improve. I can't tell you, I can't tell you that I'm happy that Hall Avenue is closing. But I can tell you that I think the overall package of what we've put together to benefit the neighborhood makes it easy for me to support this proposal because I think in the long term, we'll be happy that the city has done this so that we have better flow through, there's fewer blockages. We respond to the people all around the east side and the city of Des Moines that don't want those blockages. And so it's my intention to vote for this tonight. As Skip said, we have one more reading. I hope the plan continues to improve, but I do want to point out, and you can probably hear it in my voice, I want you to understand that this isn't the same plan as last time. We listened, we studied, we responded, and we improved the plan.
If nobody else, I'll ask the city manager, do you have any comments? Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I just want to draw attention to one of the slides that was in Phil Delafield's presentation at the very beginning. And the slide was entitled, "A Best Practices Study: Railroad and Community Interface." This comes about because one of the points that we heard last time, and the times prior to that frankly, was to the issue about looking at the long-range planning for this area around Hall Avenue and around the Fairgrounds area and asks the question, what can be done to make these neighborhoods stronger, not to break them down or to make them lesser? This particular study was at least part of our response as to how to do that. This is a study that will look at best practices and evaluate potential ideas, including balancing automobile, bicycle, rail, truck, and pedestrian mobility, buffering residential areas from railroad facilities and associating industrial uses, and encouraging rail-based economic development. This is a study that puts us on the road of looking for the kind of solutions that have been addressed by some of you in your comments about this, and I think is a very positive change. It's not the kind of thing that's going to happen overnight that's going to produce changes overnight. But in the long term, these are the kind of processes, if we do it right and we do it with a lot of intelligence, that can make our neighborhoods better. So I do want to point out again that this is one of the proposals that's new from before, and I think it has great potential to address some of the issues and concerns that you all have. And by the way, if this is voted down, the issues that you're talking about, a lot of them are still going to persist in the neighborhood. The only way to really address these issues in a way that has long-lasting impact is through a study process like this. This particular study gets us on the road and I think would be a very helpful step in allowing the community and the city working together to address some of the issues that I know are of concern to everybody.
I'll ask if there's a motion that we are going to vote on. The, as presented, it's again, the ordinance second consideration and the vacation of the three segments of street right-of-way for railroad crossing closures at Hall, Scott, and Southeast 34th Street.
You looking for motion?
Yep.
I would move that we approve this and look forward to our third reading in September as Skip mentioned it would be coming.
As the council is voting, I want to thank everybody again for coming down. John and everybody that, neighborhood meetings, we were listening and still listening to your comments. I didn't hear a big response in regard to support for a park or a greenspace over there, but I think maybe we ought to have that continued discussion with all the businesses and the people over in that area. I also appreciated, quite frankly, the photos that we got of, and comparatives. And certainly, I think that I am very much in support of greenways, walkways, and all those kinds of things and quality improvements. There's a couple of different schools of thought and love to get input from the neighborhoods, neighbors, and associations on all sides of town on what they should look like. There are those who believe that some of those areas should be left more natural with native, natural Iowa grass as opposed to, you know, clipped down looking like a golf course. I think, at least in a lot of those areas, as some of us rode on RagBri, noticed I'd kind of liked riding along by the grassy areas rather than the mowed lawns. It felt a little more like Iowa should be and in the way we ought to be preserving our natural way. I don't like the shovels in there, by the way, so I hope parks will get out there and make sure we clean some of these areas up. That's a pretty bad representation, I think, of how we want any of our sidewalks and parkways to look, no matter where they are in the city of Des Moines. To Cherie's comment again, I don't want her to ever think that it's falling on deaf ears because I totally agree in terms of the walkability and the connectedness of neighbors, people to places in this city. I think we have to continue to always work on those issues. And I think that we need to work as closely as possible with the UP to talk about how we make these spaces and also the businesses around there much more friendly. I think, as was pointed out in previous meetings and a couple of the neighborhood meetings around these issues that, at least I've attended, that people are concerned not just about how it happens as you cross those tracks, but the neighbors that back up to it and the families that walk around the area. And we want a lot of those areas to feel much more urban and nature rather than like we're living in and around brownfields. So I think that anything that we can do prior to our next meeting to try to address those issues. We've also had some discussion in the past about overpasses. Marty brought that up, as did a couple of the other speakers. I think that we ought to have a discussion around that and talk about, you know, not only the location, the cost, the budgets, and everything else, how it is that we do these things and place these for citizens, for business. Because at the end of the day, this council has to sort of balance all that out. We know at the end of the day, it's the citizens that are here every single day and care about where their kids work, whether it's safe, whether it looks good, feels good, where they're educated, how they're educated, and we constantly want to make improvements in all those areas. So I think that everybody has spoken, not only tonight, but other nights, quite eloquently and persuasively, that we need to push forward and continue this discussion. And it is, quite frankly, at least for me, not over. And I have spoken with the folks that spoke on the other side, as opposed to the neighborhoods, the UP representatives, and also the ADM folks. And I think that we need to speak to all the businesses down there because we're all in this together. And we want Des Moines and Iowa to continue to be a great place to do business and to have a job and provide jobs, but also a great place to live and a great place for people to plan to raise not only their kids, but their grandkids and their great-grandkids. So I, as Mr. Coleman pointed out, I think we've made some progress, but I'm not sure we're as far as we need to be to make me as happy as I need to be to, especially on a final vote for this. As was pointed out in, what, September 25th, did you say, Skip?
23rd.
23rd. We're going to have another vote. Hopefully, we can continue to sit down with all the folks that be in powers that be, and I mean, the citizens as well as the businesses, to come to some sort of an understanding because Des Moines needs to be a 21st century city. We have to be able to figure out what the jobs of the 21st century look like, as well as what a neighborhood looks like in this 21st century. And I think that we're making some improvements and we want to continue to do it and move through the process that the manager just pointed out. So again, I will say, I'm going to move this forward to the next reading, but I want to see some more progress and some more discussion because I think that this can't be just a "we'll get by" kind of a thing. I want to see an improvement here for the neighbors and the citizens, as well as the businesses, as an end result of this rather long discussion that we've been having for the last couple, three years. So till the 23rd, I'm going to vote for it.
Five yes, two no.
Thank you again for everybody coming down this evening. Appreciate your input. We are going to move now at 5:54 to the hearings. Item 48 is the first hearing item. It is the- It is the Items Regarding Norden Hall Relocation, Council Communication Number 13-442. A is a hearing on the Urban Renewal Agreement for the Sale of Land for Private Redevelopment to 425 East Grand LLC to Develop Disposition Parcel Number 02-02A, 425 East Grand, into the Metro Center Urban Renewal Project. B is approving the conceptual development plan and execution of a special warranty deed to 425 East Grand LLC. And C issuing a conditional certificate of appropriateness for relocation of Norden Hall from 709 East Locust Street, terminating the designation of 709 East Locust Street as a local landmark and designating 425 East Grand as a local landmark upon the relocation to that address. Is there anyone in the audience to speak to this item? Jake, anything?
If there's nothing, I'll move 48, A, B, and C.
Right.
Seems like a lot of work to move this one building.
Well, great things sometimes take a lot of work, Mr. Moore.
Seven yes.
And again, thank everybody that has been working on that from the beginning, and Jake, thank you. Forty-nine on the proposed amendment to the Fourth Year 2013 Action Plan of the 2010-2014 U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD Consolidated Plan. Is there anyone in the audience to speak to that? Yes.
This shows 49A.
Is being what? Yeah, I didn't read it. Okay, Mr. Moore points out that 49A has been withdrawn, which is an environmental review record finding of no significant impact on the environment and published notice of intent to request release of funds. So that wasn't read and isn't part of the discussion, even though I just read it.
I'll move 49.
There you go.
Seven yes.
Item 50 on the 2013 ADA Sidewalk Ramp Program, Contract Number One, Resolution Approving the Plan, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineers' Estimate Designating the Lowest Responsible Betterer as TK Concrete Inc., Tony J. Vermeer, President, $434,750. Council Communication Number 13-430A is approving the contract and the bond. Is there anybody here to speak to that item?
I'll move 50, 50A.
Fifty and 50A has been moved.
Five yes, two no.
All right, that completes our hearings at 5:57. That now takes us back to item 41. Item 41 is amending Chapter 114 of the Municipal Code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows, Council Communication Number 13-427. A is a speed limit change, Park Avenue from Fluor Drive to Southwest 14th Street. B is a two-way stop signal reversal, East 13th Street and Morton Avenue. C is installation of two-way stop at Southwest 1st Street and Hillside Avenue. And D is relocation of handicap parking meter east side of Fifth Avenue between Grand Avenue and Watson &amp; Powell Jr. Way. Is there anybody here to speak to either 41A, B, C, or D?
Mayor, nobody's here. If it has the consent of the council, I would move the first reading as is published, and then according to our non-prepublished rule, pass the second and third reading to make these changes effective as soon as possible.
Okay. It's been moved, and also to waive the second, third reading.
Seven yes.
Item 42, to continue and adjust the boundaries of the Des Moines, downtown Des Moines self-supported municipal improvement district, the Schmid, in providing for the continuation of an operation fund and the levy of an annual tax, Council Communication Number 13-425. Is there anyone to speak to that?
I'll move 42.
Forty-two has been moved. Mrs. Hensley?
Seven yes.
Forty-three, amending Chapter 74 of the Municipal Code Regarding Neighborhood Recognition Signage in City Parks, Council Communication Number 13-435.
I'll move 43.
Anybody to speak? It's been moved.
Six yes, one no.
All right, item 44, it's a request from Jerry Bradley of 4605 Southwest 15th Street to speak regarding lease for Aviation Engineering Technology Program with the Des Moines Airport Authority.
Actually, handing, each one of those is a packet outlining various...
Okay, it's been moved to receive all of those.
Aye.
For everybody on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Are these all the same?
Yes, sir, there's just a few variances in pictures, but they're pretty much the same, and they are basically what I have here in front of me this evening. I'm sorry they are not all color-coordinated, but I did the best. I bought every single one of them they had at Walmart last night, so...
You went during back-to-school.
Yeah, I did the best I can, and would like to also point out that my lovely bride was extremely helpful in putting all of this together. Mayor County, City Manager Clark, distinguished council members, I'm in front of you tonight to talk about something that I think is extremely important, and maybe on the cusp of not being able to pull it back from a situation that I think would be, for lack of a better term, a crime against our educational system. I think it was rather unique tonight to listen to Mayor County and some of the board members talk about education and what we need to educate our young people. I think it's rather important when we say, "Des Moines is a 21st century city," and latest reports that have come out said that people move to Des Moines because of our educational quality. But I come to you tonight with some basic information, and I'm showing just a few pictures up here. The top one happens to be one of our lab areas, the bottom one are some of the aircraft that we have located out at the North International Airport. I have some main questions. One, please take a quick moment and think, what is the value of your education? What is the value of your children's education? What is the value of your grandchildren's education? I think that that's a tough question to answer. It's an intangible. It's hard to put a number to it. But we are under a current condition where the Des Moines Airport Authority seems to have answered that tough question for us. They have said that the value of education is $80,000 a year, what they think they would like to charge us for the building that we are currently in and have been in since 1974, when the Des Moines School Board posted and funded a bond to build the facility that we are in as an educational facility. I'm kind of, I was kind of hoping that a lot of the people would stay here tonight, because I have a simple question to ask. How many board, how many council members know that Des Moines has an Aviation Engineering Technology Program, which is FAA Part 147 certified, and is the only high school program of its kind out of over 4,200 school districts in the Midwest, including cities like Minneapolis, St. Paul, Omaha, Kansas City, St. Louis, Chicago, Milwaukee, Detroit? Tough question. How many here know that we have that type of program? One, two, three, four, five, six. It's not a very good number, not to have one of the most unique programs in the United States. There are approximately 147 schools in the United States. Currently, there are less than 100. We have 15,000 students that are in all of those programs in the entire country. We're graduating 3,000 students a year to become AMTs. About 2,000 will go into the industry, because that ticket is very valuable. Ask yourself a question. When you graduated from high school, and you went to Purdue, Kansas State, Southern Illinois, and you showed them your diploma, what would they grant you for that diploma? Maybe entrance into the school if you passed your SATs and got a relatively recent or reasonable score. But a person who has never been to college, who has attained their airframe and powerplant license, can go to a school that offers those type of programs, show them that ticket, and that college or university will grant them up to 67 hours of college credit. I would like to point out that I certainly appreciate the help of Councilwoman Hensley, who has come out to the building and seen what we do, Councilwoman Moore, who gave me the opportunity to talk to the mayor. This program is extremely unique. It needs to be where it is located. The airport has come up and said, "Don't care what you say, don't care who you think you are, this is what we're going to do." What they have done is they have, and there's a tremendous amount of information here, ladies and gentlemen, so I'm pleased going to ask you to go through it at your leisure and take a look at it. I'll be glad to answer any questions concerning it. But they have offered us a one-year lease with no extensions. They said, "Well, we have a building out there. It's the old American Equity Hangar. You can have that for $40,000 a year." That's like moving from your, from this console chamber into that anteroom. We currently have 30,000 square feet under roof. We have 10 aircraft. If they are so short of space, and there's so many people that need to be moving into these areas, why can't they rent that hangar? They can't. You can't even get your airplanes down to it. Why are we being forced to move? We've been a good member for 39 years on that airport. We have excellent relationship with past airport boards.
Jerry, we're going to have to ask you to wrap it up if you can here.
And I appreciate that, Mayor. There are a couple of other people that may be able to speak tonight. It simply boils down to this. Why is it that we have an Airport Authority Board that doesn't really seem to report to anyone? That they can make decisions simply by passing and saying, "This is what we're going to do." You know, there's an old saying, that happiness is getting what you want. Being ecstatic is wanting what you get. What they offered us is not a plan. What they offered us is not a solution. If we have, if we have a one-year extension and no possibilities to move, I don't have, the program's not going to continue. We have graduated in excess of 1,000 students. Of those 1,000 students, less than 1% have not been successful. We have students that have gone on to every type of career you can imagine, academies, working full-time technicians at the guard, airline pilots, National Transportation Safety Board, nuclear engineers, air traffic controllers. You, Des Moines, everybody says is what we need, is we need a college, we need a program that prepares our kids for careers without going to college. We have a simple saying, "Learn to earn, earn to learn." Our kids walk out of there with 44 hours of college credit. They walk out of there with an ability to have a certificate recognized by the federal government that can guarantee them a job. Between 20 and 13, and 2034, we are going to need 601,000 AMTs in the United States, and we will have 2,000 per month to provide them or to fill those slots. Ladies and gentlemen, this is an extremely important program. I think it deserves to be reviewed. I think it needs to have some serious questions asked. In this packet, the last page, first of all, out of all the career and technical programs, mine and one other are the only two that have met consistently the goals for reading and math in our district, as well as a precedent has been set in Van Nuys, California, where the Airport Authority can charge us $1 a year at no harm and no foul by the federal government or the DOT. I know that the COO and the superintendent wanted to be here tonight, but because of the heat and some of the problems we had, they were unable to make it. But I'd certainly be glad to entertain any questions. Lot of information, any questions that I can answer.
Anybody have anything?
You answered the one question I had, because that was, we had talked about having somebody from the schools here to address that as well, but yeah.
And I, and believe me, the superintendent, school board, and senior administrative personnel support the program unequivocally. But when a question was made that said, "They could be in any building in Des Moines." I invite you to come out and take a look. Look at the airplanes that we have. We can't move. We can't take that type of assets. We have $10.5 million of assets in aircraft that have been brought into this program that have cost the district and the taxpayers nothing. This program operates in the black every year. It is an exceptionally good program. Thank you.
Anybody else need to speak?
Rick Graves, 1020 South Avenue, Norwalk. Why am I at a Des Moines City Council meeting? Because I'm a retired teacher, and what's happening is wrong here. Students who come to programs to learn careers are what make this city what it is today. Tech High, Central Campus, those are things that are unique to Des Moines. They pay the bills, those people who attend those classes, they pay their bills. They stay in Des Moines. They work in Des Moines, they buy their houses in Des Moines. They don't go other places. This is a chance to keep a program that is unique out in front, and part of why Des Moines is, was recognized, because of these, this program. This is not the only program that's in danger, but this is the one that you can do something about right now. The Airport Authority doesn't seem to have any checks and balances, which to me is amazing, that you folks... that you folks let them get away without being able to check on them and, and balances. But the Des Moines Public Schools Aviation Engineering Program is one of a kind. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience to speak? Any, Mrs. Hensley?
Um, I have had the opportunity to go out and tour, as Jerry Bradley indicated, and it's an extremely impressive program, there's no doubt about it. And when I've had an opportunity to really learn about the program overall, it seems like, from a city's perspective, that we need to figure out how to make this work. Now, having said that, we have the Airport Authority, which I'm respectful of and understand how that works. I've been given direction by legal to make sure I understand. So, um, what we have here is, you, you have signed a one-year contract. We, we're not talking about that. We can't talk about that. What we have to talk about is the future. And how do we work to ensure that the program continues and is successful? You've got the, you've got the, the information to underscore how successful the program has been. You have provided information about it has been saved in the 11th hour in other communities. It's my understanding that you also have proposed, you through the school system have proposed actually increasing the rents that you've been paying, so it's closer to fair market value, even though based upon what's happened in other parts of the country, you would not be required to have to pay fair market value. I, what I'm asking, knowing what we can and can't do, is that the city council send a letter of support for the program, asking the Airport Authority to work, to do what they can, to sit down, have the appropriate people involved in those discussions, understanding that the Airport Authority has the final say. But I believe it's one about education. If our citizens understand the impact of the program, if we all understand the impact of the program, I would think that we would want to find a solution to ensure that it's successful. Programs that have moved off of airports have gone, have just disbanded, they, they've had to close. So, I, I just want to find a reasonable solution to this, and I would agree, I don't think it's reasonable to ask you to move, especially if you go out and you tour the airport facility. It would be extremely difficult. So, I would just ask that the council be supportive in working to find a solution, and we need to do it sooner rather than later, but just underscoring our support for the program, knowing that the final decision will have to be made by the Airport Authority.
Any other comments? Skip?
Well, I'd like to receive and file the report and refer it to the manager to provide us with a, to ask the Airport Authority for a report from them as to reasoning in this.
I've had emails back that indicate that there's a need for space, that they negotiated this contract in good faith, and that the schools were supportive of it at the time.
That, that's fine, but I'd still like to have it in writing.
Okay.
I think we're asking the same thing.
All right, we've got a motion here to ask to, I think, have a open discussion with the airport and communication with them, saying, "Will we support the program?"
Correct. And I would suggest that it start with a letter indicating that there's support for the program.
And, and I also think that, having talked with Jerry earlier, I'm, I'm concerned about the, um, the future of the program. Not, not only at the airport, but I know that Jerry has been there for a number of years and has led it well, and the students have done well. But at some point or another, Jerry's going to move along, maybe after this year, next year. What's the succession plan? What's the commitment of the school district to keep this thing going? I mean, are they going to train somebody up to do it? How do they know what's going on there? As near as I can tell, except for maybe Jerry and this retired gentleman over here, there's not a lot of knowledge base there. We need to find some folks that are willing to take this thing on and a commitment from the school district to, to keep it, be the program and improve it over time. And I, I'd like to hear that before, you know, we start drawing lines and saying with the, the Airport Authority as to what's going to happen after this lease that apparently has been extended for another year. So, I think we've got a lot of work to do, in my opinion, to, to make sure all the parties come to, come, come together to have an agreement about this important program. If somebody's willing, we've got a gentleman who has his hand up out here in the audience. We'd ask if the council will permit you to come up here and speak from here rather than the audience, and give us your name and address. Is that all right with the council?
Yeah. Sure. Hi, I'm Brett Bremaker. My address is 1405 East Boston, Indianola, Iowa. I'm a recent hire to the Des Moines Aviation Program. Working with Jerry, Jerry's teaching me everything he knows. There are other people helping me with this as well. I come from 28 years of aviation background. A little bit of it's different than, than what Jerry has. That's a good thing. I worked 20 years for, 22 years for a company called ABX Air. They were Airborne Express at one time, and ultimately changed to the HM. At that, during my time out here, and just, it was all 20 years that was out here at the, the Des Moines Airport. My partner there of 20 years was actually a product of, of this program. It's an excellent program, and I'm very proud to be a part of it. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
So, we have one motion over here that Mrs. Hensley made. We have, I'm not sure whether this is an amendment or an addition to it that Mr. Moore has.
I'd like to make an amendment that we have a report back in writing from the Airport Authority as to their reasoning.
That's fine.
I'd like to add to that, that we get a report from the school district, what their plans are for an aviation program, what they are looking to discontinue this, or if they're looking to, to support it in the future, and, and what, what do they have to substitute for it?
It's, it's, and I, I think that's an excellent suggestion. I would just add, and Mr. Bradley didn't go into as much detail, but I think I can answer the question. It is an open-enrolled program, so as a result, it has been a moneymaker for the school system. And that's significant, because I'm guessing that, that doesn't happen with a lot of the programs. So, it's not only Des Moines students, but it's really a regional program where you have people coming from the entire metro area.
Well, I see it is under their control, so what are their plans?
Yeah.
All right, so we've got a couple free things. This motion is very clear, I think, at this moment, but we're going to, we're going to move forward on it.
And timing is of the essence, because it will take some time to work through it.
Manager has a, I'm not sure whether a comment or a question.
Well, it's, Mr. Mayor, it's a question. You've, you've got a couple of different concepts here. I just want to make sure I understand if the motion is approved. It sounds like there's sort of two steps. One is sort of a reconnaissance step, check out with the airport.
One is a letter that Mrs. Hensley said that is going to be a support. We like the program. Then we've got a request as to, from the, the Airport Authority to explain to us where they're going with this program. And then we've got another one to ask the school district what's going on. What's the future?
Okay. Do you, do you, do you want to do the letter of support before you've done the reconnaissance?
Well, I, I see the letter of support being, we, you know, at, the letter of support, but asking for the information as requested.
Okay.
And then I also see that setting the stage that we want to have some discussions as to how, how best could we help them make this move forward?
Okay, I think I got it.
Is that, is that okay?
Yeah.
All right.
Six yes.
All right, item 45 is from Carl G. Nelson of 1340 East 13th Street to speak regarding behavior of a municipal employee.
Mayor, while he's coming up, and we certainly appreciate this, I'd like to make sure that we draw a fine line before, between information that should be public and that that should be private in terms of an employee, if that's what he's...
Well, right. I suppose that, that, Mr. Attorney, we, there's a request to speak to the council, and I think that maybe Carl needs to understand what our authority is, is here in regard to these types of reports and what the council and our relationship with particular employees.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. The important, a couple of important factors here is the manager and not the council who has day-to-day control over employees and operations, including almost every city employee. So, that, from that perspective, any comments concerning specific employees should be directed to the city manager as opposed to the council. Secondly, the council's own rules of proceedings provide that comments and general discussion should not be personalized and should not be negatively personalized. So, I would encourage the mayor as chair to make sure that we don't go down that path. If he wants to speak in terms of general employee behavior, I suppose that's okay. But once he starts down talking about specific employees, then that's the manager's purview, and it's also violative of, of the council's own rules regarding these meetings.
Okay. With that clear...
May I bring, bring this to a, a point of saying it concerns a city department? I don't have to single out one person, but this is the person I had involvement with the most. So, I'd, I'd like to bring that to your attention, if you will.
I think that an individual employee, based upon what we've just heard, maybe that discussion could happen with the city manager.
Sure.
And you could talk about general behavior of employees, I would guess universally. But I think when we get down to a specific employee, that, that discussion, I guess we would refer for you to have a conversation directly with the city manager regarding your concerns in that regard to that individual.
Can I do that now, or do I have to make arrangements otherwise?
Uh, I, I think that what we could do is the city manager would try to not, probably not right now, but make a time and place specific to, to meet with you to do that in, probably in his office.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I, I'd be happy to have the gentleman sit with Larry Hulse, who's Assistant City Manager, and we could do that right this minute, if you'd like.
But you, you won't hear a complaint I have about this department of the city and the persons involved in that? That's, that's the whole subject. If I, I may have not indicated my reason for this more clearly. That, that's my mistake. It, it involved a person who would be so demanding and, as a member of a city department. That, that's the only person I was dealing with. That's why I singled this person out.
Okay. I, I, that sounds to me like probably I, we ought to refer that immediately and directly to, as the manager suggested to Mr. Hulse. And Larry, if you would be so kind as to come forward, I, I think this gentleman deserves to have this discussion now, and the manager has asked Assistant City Manager to hear your complaint, so you don't have to come back.
Certainly.
If you would like, probably could take him into, into my office back here and, or at our conference room and have this very specific discussion. We appreciate your coming down. We just have to be very careful of, of, of the rules as the city attorney has, has laid out.
Okay, I thank you.
And in terms, just a little comment, Mayor. In terms of Mr. Hulse's judgment, if it is an issue that is appropriate for the council, maybe he can reschedule another time. I suspect that we're right, and it's better handled through Mr. Hulse.
I'm sure they will do that. Should we have a motion to...
I'll move to receive and file and acknowledge that we've referred the issue to the city manager's office.
I think Mr. Coleman voted yes.
Yes. Six yes.
All right, item 46 has been withdrawn. Item 47, from the Representatives of St. Augustine's Church to speak regarding its properties located in the vicinity of 40th Street and Grand Avenue.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, William Lillis, 317 Sixth Avenue, Suite 300. I'm appearing on behalf of St. Augustine. Also, this evening is Andy Ball, who's the administrator and finance director at St. Augustine's, and Bill Serangeli, co-council, or council for St. Augustine. On July 15th, we were here, as the council may remember, to talk about the, two of the three properties that are owned in the vicinity of 40th and Grand Avenue. It was thought at that time that there may be a possibility, which turned out in our mind not to be a probability, but at least a possibility, that the two houses or large structures may be able to be moved. So, we set forth at that time a procedure to go through a process to allow on a couple successive, or frankly, a couple Saturdays, and to do all of this work and see if there'd be some, as I want to say, some legs to the possibility that these structures could be moved to a different location, one or both. There's a third property that's not the subject of any discussion, because St. Augustine's intend, intend to keep that. These are all, that's on 40th Street. To reiterate what we talked about on July 15th, we said that, we meeting St. Augustine, that the contractor must post a $3,000 refundable bond, frankly, as a deposit, must notify the church by 8:15, by the 15th of August, of a site for each or, for each home, and then must have a pre-application process with the city completed. And the church, of course, reserved the right to review all of this, to find out if there could in fact be any possibility that one or two of these two structures could be retained. That happened by, in our, at least in our judgment, happened to, to quite extent by representatives of St. Augustine's. There was one party that came forward, I think Mr. Kazer's here this evening, and he spoke with Mr. Ball in particular on many occasions to see if there was a way to follow through and see if this could be done. There are countless emails back and forth, and there was a process where the people, many people came through the structure. Ironically, one of the structures, at the conclusion of a couple of, at least one visit, the foundation started to crumble. So, there was a discussion between the various lawyers and the city building department as to whether this structure, in our mind, we thought it was unsafe to have any further inspection of that one particular structure. We'd be happy to answer your questions. Mr. Kazer's here. He's had some emails, like I say, back and forth regarding these various possibilities of moving these structures. At best my knowledge, there has not been a pre-application conference, which of course was one of the prerequisites with the council wanted to know, as did St. Augustine's. If in fact there would be a possibility to move these structures, where would they go? Would they comply with the zoning? I think that was one of the things that Mike Ludwig suggested as to whether they would even be able to be permitted to be moved to that particular location. I don't think that's been completed. We'd welcome questions. We'd share emails that we've shared back and forth with, in particular, Mr. Kazer regarding the probability or possibility. We, at this point, determined that it's, it's not too probable. We indicated we'd come back to the council on this date, we'd make a report to you as to at least what we think we did and what we outlined we would do. We believe... we would do. We believe we've done that, and we'd, at this point, whether I can answer the question or Mr. Ball can answer the question, we should defer to any of the council members' questions, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Anybody have any questions? Ms. Hensley?
Okay. Can I go back, Bill, a couple comments, and I just want to make sure I've got this correct, because I'm getting differing views on this. You said that you thought that Mr. Kaiser had, or Kizer, had had several conversations with Andy Ball, and I had copies of the emails. I think you sent those to us from Rick Clark. And the emails that I had, maybe I didn't get them all, but there were three emails, I believe.
No, that's not true. There were more than that. And we have many emails and conversations that happened between Mr. Ball and Mr. Kizer.
So we didn't get all of them, is that correct?
No. There were countless emails and conversations back and forth. It primarily was to see when the church would make available the facilities for inspection. Can you come through? Can you come through with your engineer? Can you come through with another gentleman? So Mr. Ball could answer those questions much better than I.
Okay.
But they shared emails as to when they could do that, how they could do it, when they could do, how they could do it, and so forth. So there are countless emails back and forth, in particular with Mr. Kizer and Mr. Ball regarding that. So we'd be happy to have Mr. Ball, if I don't answer the question correctly.
I'm glad to hear that, because the email I had was dated August tenth, and then there was nothing until August twenty-first. So it appeared that there was no ongoing communication between Mr. Kizer and St. Augustine's, which obviously is problematic if we're trying to get some resolution here.
We went back and took the emails, and this is just a way that I had to go back and check the various emails that Mr. Ball gave to me. The fifteenth, this is yellow, no particular reason it's yellow, other than that was the only highlight I had on my desk. Fifteenth was that we were here at the council. Sixteenth started a discussion between Mr. Kizer and Mr. Ball. The eighteenth, nineteenth, more emails. Twenty-first, twenty-second, this is all, of course, in July. I would indicate there will be, every Tuesday, there's an opportunity to have a pre-application conference. We thought that was very important, because the city in particular said, if there is going to be a moving of any of these structures, we want to know where. And believe me, St. Augustine wants to know where also, because we did outline at the council when we were here the last time, that October fifteenth was a target date that we were using. There's another email on the sixth, the eighth, the tenth, the fifteenth.
So, Bill, the actual email from Mr. Kizer on the tenth was the one that outlined exactly what they, what their thought process and business plan was for the moving of the properties?
Yeah, I believe so. The tenth was the first time that I think they, was, they said, this is what they had in mind, this is what they wanted to do. And so the tenth came, and then that response, my response, I think, was on the twentieth, or something like that, of August. In particular, though, on, early on in the process, there was a Wednesday, I think July twenty-fourth, there's a list of twenty-five different people that came through the structure, and one of whom was Mr. Kizer. Mr. Kizer's worked hard, I think, to try to see if there is a way to set, salvage and/or to keep these structures. So he's to be complimented, but we've cooperated, to the best of our knowledge, in, in working with Mr. Kizer to see if that can in fact happen. And we don't think it can, to be very candid.
And so Mr. Kizer was the absolute only person that followed up with St. Augustine's as a result of the action for the last council meeting?
So Andy, why don't you answer that question? This is Andy Ball, and you'd have to introduce yourself, Andy, as to your name.
Certainly. Andy Ball, Nine Foster Drive, Des Moines, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman. That's correct.
So nobody else came forward? Mr. Kizer was the only one?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I do want to reiterate, though, that this structure, and it was the one in particular, the foundation started to crumble. I think maybe Mr. Kizer was there at the time with Mr. Ball. And so we did, because of liability, we talked with Mr. Serangeli, who's our legal counsel, to be sure that we, you know, had no legal liability. So did we deny the access to that structure? Yes, we did, for obvious reasons, because we didn't want anybody to get hurt. Mr. Kizer, I think, even assisted us in trying to board him up so that people wouldn't come in there, because we've had a lot of, I hate to use the word, interloper, but that's in fact what we've had.
Okay.
Anybody have anything else, any questions?
Are you going to speak, Mr. Kizer?
If you could, just.
And then anybody else who has any comments, we'd ask you to kind of come forward after Mr. Kizer and speak to this, if you would, please. Mr. Ball, what, what is your relationship in this whole proceeding?
My actual title is Business and Finance Officer for St. Augustine Parish here in Des Moines.
I appreciate that. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Phil Kizer. I currently live at 23918 Glenwood Circle in Adele. But until I moved three years ago, I lived about a mile from Fortieth and Grand. I'm a lifetime member of Plymouth Congregational Church, so I'm familiar with the history of both Plymouth and St. Augustine Churches. Purchases of the house east of them from Grand to Ingersoll, Fortieth to Forty-first Street. I remember when they approached the city council in the late nineteen nineties to have Forty-first Street condemned from Grand to Ingersoll and demolition permits granted for the row of houses they owned immediately east of Forty-first. I became aware of the agreements that the city had with both churches regarding demolition of the remaining houses when an article came out in the Des Moines Register about June sixth. It covered the story about St. Augustine's threat of a lawsuit against the city of Des Moines if they were not issued demolition permits for 4005 and 4011 Grand Avenue. At that point, I decided to try and determine if one or both of the houses could be saved by moving them. I have preservation experience going back to the nineteen eighties, when I first bought a sixplex in Sherman Hill and then a house, renovating them both. In nineteen ninety-seven, Mark Kennedy and I put together a group of friends to buy the Valair Ballroom, save it from the wrecking ball. Six years later, we sold it, and I looked for a new preservation project. In March of two thousand and eight, I funded the moving of the Murillo apartment building, an endeavor so large that was filmed by National Geographic and featured on their series on the Discovery Channel called Monster Moves. Unfortunately, it was a horrible decision, made at an incredibly poor time, to have your money in any form of real estate, let alone historical preservation. I was unable to finish the project myself, but sold it to another developer who did. Today, the Murillo Apartments are one of the many jewels in Sherman Hill. In my experience, for a successful preservation project, you need at least four things. An owner that truly wants to see the building saved and is willing to work towards that goal, a developer competent enough to make that project happen, new locations for the buildings, given the challenges of moving a large building, and of course, the money to finance the project. At this point, we have none of those components. In the nineteen sixties, Plymouth Church proposed a similar project to the city council. They had purchased the houses directly across Ingersoll Avenue and proposed to tear down the houses to make way for senior citizen housing. That included a beautiful mansion, in my memory, a far nicer property than either 4005 or 4011 Grand Avenue. The council approved their request. Plymouth Place was built, and we now have a better use of that land, serving a greater benefit to the community than those single-family homes. Although St. Augustine's has not announced their intentions for use of the land, they did promise at the July fifteenth council meeting that would not be used for additional parking. Good preservation projects start well before the owner feels the need to demolish their building. Those who do not want to see any more demolition of historic properties along Grand Avenue need to recognize what other properties are currently in jeopardy and act now. Topping the list should be 520 Fortieth Street. This is the third home in the R3 zone parcel that includes 4005 and 4011 Grand Avenue. It was vacated at the same time as the Grand Avenue properties, which tells me that it's only a measure of time before St. Augustine seeks to also tear it down. I'm told that it's architecturally significant, has a very good example of Prairie View construction, and as a smaller building, it would be far easier to move and less costly to renovate back into a single-family home. Second on my list would be the old Christian Science Church that sits across Grand Avenue and slightly east. It has been vacant for years, and I've heard that it's economically unfeasible to renovate without the involvement of a patron or nonprofit corporation. If you want to see it saved, start now. While I do not have the personal resources anymore to save either property, I can provide valuable information to someone who is willing and capable. I'll leave my contact information with the city council if anyone wants to get in touch with me, and I'll make myself available outside the chamber at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Can I just add one clarification note? The house that you talked about on Fortieth Street, it's my understanding that that house will be saved and will not be, is not, they've already geared, they've already told us that they were going to save that house.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure you're aware of that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kimberly Hansen, 4015 Woodland Avenue, president of North of Grand Neighborhood Association.
Thank you.
And handing Chris the letter from the North of Grand Neighborhood Association, which we had mailed to the city council and the mayor a couple weeks ago. So the mission, we just wanted to review the mission of the North of Grand Neighborhood Association, is to ensure the existing and projected infrastructure systems are managed or developed so they enhance the physical, visual, and spatial qualities of the neighborhood, promoting a healthy climate and for area businesses and private, public and private properties. Aligned with our mission is our goal to strengthen communication between neighborhood institutions, business, and residents. As you are aware, the North of Grand Neighborhood Board of Directors is concerned about the proposed, the proposal by St. Augustine's Church to demolish the two properties at Fortieth and Grand, which are now listed in the National Register of Historic Places as part of the Greenwood Parks Platte Historic District. The North of Grand Neighborhood prides itself in on history and has taken active steps to educate its residents about the richness of the past that surrounds them. The North of Grand Board has organized popular and well-attended architectural walking, biking, and trolley tours and traveling photo exhibits of historic photographs to highlight those assets and to place them into the 21st century perspective. We have been, we have a keen understanding of what our neighborhood has become over 125 years, a safe, affordable, historic neighborhood in close proximity to shopping, dining, mass transportation, quality schools, and churches. Please allow this letter to serve as a vehicle to open up communication and conversation regarding the properties at Fortieth and Grand Avenue. Our two organizations successfully worked together in the expansion of St. Augustine's parking lot in nineteen ninety-nine. At that time, we felt the level of communication would stay consistent and not waver as the two organizations are dedicated to the same vision, the future of this neighborhood. Additionally, since these properties are located within a national historic district, the North of Grand Board serves as a resource and advisory body regarding historic and other economic development incentives that may affect the properties within the neighborhood. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to your response and welcome the opportunity to continue dialogue with the city of Des Moines and St. Augustine's Catholic Church. Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Sorry, can I get this?
What do we have here, Colleen?
My name is Colleen Kenny, 632 Fortieth Street. I'm passing out a letter, personal opinion, taking off my North of Grand Neighborhood Association Board Member.
We probably have a motion to receive and file all this stuff.
I'll move receive and file. Can you turn on the?
Oh, and say aye.
Aye.
Close. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City council members, two issues need to be resolved before action is taken. Because the church has declined to explain its plans for redevelopment, we have no idea what they intend to do with the property. However, the website for the Diocese of Des Moines describes an initiative for senior housing, identifying funding sources such as HUD and the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program administered by the Iowa Finance Authority. If this is in their plan for this site, they must be aware that they would be required to comply with Section 106, Review of the National Historic Preservation Act. The main purpose is to minimize potential harm and damage to historic properties. There are 278 resources, including the churches and their rental properties, contributing to the Greenwood Park Platte Historic District, listed to the National Register of Historic Places in April. This was a successful $29,000 project, thanks to the support from the city of Des Moines, Polk County, and the State Historical Society of Iowa's Historic Resource Development Program. In addition to its significance as the first Des Moines location for the Iowa State Fair, Greenwood Park Platte also demonstrates early residential growth and expansion, serving as a node from which the western part of the city proper expanded in all directions. Upon request, I can provide more specific information about its architectural and historical significance. For months, concerned individuals and I have requested sitting down together and talking about options and opportunities. The response was to file a lawsuit against the city and to hire private security to guide us on their property, which, by the way, has valid and current rental certificates through the city of Des Moines right now. Could you please ask the property owners, are they considering any federal assistance, such as HUD funds or the Low Income Tax Credit for future projects on this site? Secondly, in exchange for Forty-first Street to be used for parking, church leaders promised in nineteen ninety-eight, we intend to, excuse me, we intend to maintain, preserve, and continue to use the properties we control for our ministry and/or residential rental as required. The letter is there from Dr. Rui, as well as Monsignor Benano. It's item one and two. I strongly request that our leaders refer this manner to plan and zoning commission, so we can have a public discussion and clarification about all the properties owned by Plymouth and St. Augustine between Fortieth and Forty-second Grand and Ingersoll. In addition to revisiting the street lease agreement, many residents, voters, property owners, taxpayers, and, yes, people who cherish old homes like myself in this part of Des Moines, ask that its city leaders follow an inclusive participatory and democratic process in practice. No questions?
Thank you.
Jack Porter, eight fifteen Eighteenth Street, and Des Moines Mayor, and members of the city council, I rise in support of what the previous speaker just said. Been, I don't have prepared remarks or anything like that, but I've been thinking a lot about how our cities deteriorate over time. And some of that is just the piecemeal approach that land and zoning and development occurs. And perhaps what Colleen has touched on with those properties between Fortieth and Forty-second Grand and Ingersoll, perhaps the city, and I would encourage Plan and Zoning and the Landmarks Group and the Architectural Advisory Board, look at the entire Grand and Ingersoll corridor, not from just economic development or land use, but also from a viewpoint of historic preservation. I would guess that many of us have been in large cities throughout the United States and in Europe. Recently, we were at the Preserve Iowa Summit in Burlington for the last three days, and we heard speaker after speaker talk about the value of preserving our historic resources and the trades and all the economic development that that spurs. But I've been thinking a lot about Detroit. I think we all are. And we realize that perhaps one of the things that happened is the focus of downtown development overtook neighborhood development, and it was either or. And I'm proud to say, as a citizen of Des Moines, I believe we've tried to strike a balance between developing downtown and jobs and freeways and all the things that that brings to us with neighborhood development. It seems to me that just looking at Fortieth and Forty-second from Grand to Ingersoll isn't enough. For us that have been here our entire lives, we remember the Grand Avenue was the mansion corridor and the entry to our city. It no longer functions that. corridor and the entry to our city. It no longer functions that way perhaps, but that doesn't mean what's remaining there can't be capitalized on. It doesn't mean we can't take pride in the preservation or historic resources, whether it's a mansion, a streetscape, or a commercial property. And so I would encourage the council to look at the entire thing, and I know that's not easy, and oftentimes it's hard and complex, but it's time. I believe we can no longer lose some of our huge, beautiful mansions like 4,005 Grand. It does take, like Phil mentioned, an owner who wants to preserve it and invest it and keep it and realize it's an asset and not a liability. For the city of Des Moines, it's definitely an asset to preserve Grand and Ingersoll corridor as a place we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Mayor and council members, David Barzan, 42051st Street in Des Moines, historic preservationist throughout the city. My comments are very, very short. I've been through the house, I've toured the houses. I've done a lot of restoration efforts around Des Moines, and I've found that it does take a lot of effort, a lot of money, and I feel fulfilled because I was one that was trying to purchase the Murillo and did not come out on the winning end of that after, after it got moved. So I appreciate you going to that effort because it's a lot of effort. But my thought on these houses is that two open houses and a one-month period in time is not long enough to try to find a savior that is going to go through the effort and the time and the money to save these properties, to find a lot, to do a feasibility study, to secure the financing, to save this building or these buildings that have stood their ground for 110 years. And, you know, until we see a plan on what's happening on this property going forward, I don't see what the big rush is on getting these buildings torn down. And let them sit there for a while longer until we find this person that can come forward or this group of people that can come forward. I know of a number of people right now that are working on this, trying to get everything put together, trying to find the investors, and they haven't come forward with a plan yet because they haven't finalized anything yet, but the passion is there.
Have they made any contact, Abe, with the church at all? I mean, because they would have had to have some contact with the church.
I don't know if they have or not. I know that, you know, right now, there's trying to secure people that want to buy the lots that they're looking at to move the houses to those lots. And the lots that are the closest unfortunately are about $180,000. And so you're looking at a pretty sizable amount of money between that and the moving cost. But especially the 4,005 property, you know, once it's restored and moved and relocated, you know, you're looking at a house that's easily a half million dollar home or more. And I understand that there's possibly a better use for this land right now, but until we see a plan brought forward, I don't know what the big rush is on getting these houses torn down. They had been left open, and I'd actually gone in there one time when they'd been left open. They were not secured by the church, and so people were coming in and stealing the copper pipes out of it and doing damage to the property, and I feel that was sad because that wasn't a very good respectable thing to do to protect the homes from those kind of things happening while people were trying to come forward with preservation ideas or restoration projects to try to save the houses. So I just, again, I appreciate all you've done on trying to delay the demolition permits. I guess I'm still not really understanding what the big rush is to try to get them demolished now when there's no plan on the table on what's going to happen with the property. So, thank you.
Nan Stilley, 1604 24th Place. I'm not speaking specifically to this issue of these two buildings, but something I think is so intrinsically tied into it and has been tied into other such actions over the years, and that is nonprofits not acting like nonprofits. Nonprofit carries the sense that it is something for the public good, and whether it's a church or a hospital or what, some, now we have nonprofits of every sort, and nonprofit is getting to the point where it can be, it can be a synonym for profit-making. It can be a synonym for, predator is not probably exactly the right word, but nonprofits are now the thing to be. And not only this church, but Plymouth and various other groups in town, Wesley Acres, are acting as though they are in some kind of competitive business world as opposed to doing service, say, in religion, in, in community ethics, morality of some sort. Nonprofit, and that's, that's where this council, I feel, has failed because every, you know, every, we've had, we've had historic, the disappearance of history in this city at 83, I've seen so much of it that it's no longer, it's no longer a point to speak to the specific. But when you can have a church like Plymouth, take the excellent Plymouth Place and turn it now into something that, you know, someone on that board got the idea of changing it all around despite the fact it was a national model, and now we have this, rush it through, and why I, these buildings do not appeal to me in the same way that the Christian Science Church does, and the tragedy if that goes down. But when I know that the people who are running Wesley Acres haven't paid attention to all the people who are living in Wesley Acres apartments and apartment buildings, they have not paid attention to them in talking about what should happen to the Christian Science Church. So nonprofits are a subject, I think, for a town meeting, and I have been pushing this with the mayor, town meetings where people get a chance to say what they feel about what's going on instead of all the lawyering back and forth and which lawyer is going to be able to intimidate the city lawyers or if the city's acting badly the other way. You know, morality is something that does tie into everything else, and I think if we could all think in terms of making nonprofits a little more responsible, and I don't know how you're going to do it, but if there were some way, I think it might even become a subject of discussion and some brainstorming in public meetings if we can ever get some.
Appreciate everybody's input, and certainly we have town hall meetings from time to time, but this is a good example of a public meeting and where people can come and ask to speak to the city council, and we've heard quite a variety of them tonight speaking. So we'll continue to push that forward, Nan, and we'll see what we can do. Mr. Coleman?
Yeah, a lot of comments made, and I do, I do have a lot of pride in the efforts that we've made to save the buildings that we have in our city, and I think we're doing a better job the last several years than, than happened for several decades. So we should, we should be proud of that, and that should fuel our energy to do more of it. In, in this case, I have a procedural question. We took, I think the staff sought council guidance a month ago or so, maybe longer ago than that, and then the council took action to say, here's a process by which the, the property owners could obtain the demolition permit. It's my understanding of the action that we took, and maybe this is for you, manager, you, Mr. Lester, it's my understanding that if, if we do nothing, based on the action that the council took last time, the church proceeding as we asked them to a month or six weeks ago, whatever that was, staff would issue the demolition permit if we took no action today.
Mr. Coleman, council members, it was about a month ago that, that at this table the council established a process. I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head what the parameters were, but they were essentially, as I think you've described them. And at the end of that period, then the council would make some determination as to whether or not the process had been concluded, and the church representatives would indicate to us what their, what their conclusions were based on that. And then based on that input, the staff would either issue the permit or not.
Other comments?
Mayor?
Yes.
You know, I, I just need to respond to some of the comments that have been made here, and, and I think that this council has demonstrated that they're very supportive of historic structures, and we've taken some positive actions. I know we had a committee meeting, it's been a week or so ago, and there were some great discussions. And I, you know, a comment was made that there's only been one month to look at this and to figure out, you know, if we could get somebody to come in and save it. And I really take exception to that because I started getting calls and inquiries back in April and May when there was some indication that there was potentially some demolition that was going to start. And as a result of that, I contacted Community Development, we, we went back and we looked at what were the documents that had been agreed to by Plymouth and St. Augustine's as we went through the process back in the late 90s. And there'd been a tremendous amount of work and effort, and Bill and others were very involved in that. So there was great dialogue, and I felt that it was really important that we lived up to what had been committed in that time. So as a result of that, we did watch and were monitoring, and permits were not issued. We had follow-up meetings, we had a couple of meetings, at least one meeting with NOG. There were a lot of discussions that went on, and that happened the first part of June, and that was right after a lawsuit had been filed by the church when the permits were not issued. And the reason I go back that far is because it's been going on all summer. It's not been one month. It's been going on really since May, probably the end of April would be my guess if I look back at the dates. So there has been a lot of discussion. It's not something that has just happened. And we, I understand there are certain individuals, certain camps where you can never tear anything down. Doesn't matter what it is, they don't want it torn down. Then there, there's another camp where you have to be realistic about it. Does it make sense financially? Phil, you laid out the four components. I think they're excellent. It's got to make financial sense. There's got to be a place to move it to. You've got to have somebody that's got the know-how, and the people that own the property have got to be committed to allowing it to happen. And I would agree with Phil right now. I don't think that we have those four pieces. David, if you've got people that are out there that say they can move it and they're working on it, they darn well should have been in contact with St. Augustine's Church. Even if they don't have everything put together, how are they going to get it put together if they don't talk with the church?
Yeah.
I mean, that's the problem, you know, and, and so I, I'm just feeling frustrated. I mean, we're sitting up here trying to be responsive to the historic preservationists. I mean, we understand what you're saying, but yet everything is kind of in darkness and people are not communicating. And, you know, thank you for putting an effort forward to try to get it done. Thank you for offering to provide technical support if there's somebody else out there. But it's just very, very frustrating to me right now to be sitting here and having this discussion. And the other item I would just, and, and we as council members did work with the lawyers, and we need to go back and talk about, we made a commitment that we set out a timeline thinking it was reasonable with the understanding that they would withdraw their lawsuit, which they have done. We agreed, and they came and made up a report to us that meeting in July. We laid out the timeline. We didn't really have anybody that spoke. I mean, there might have been one or two people, but it was not a concern. I didn't hear one issue of concern. I didn't get any emails about concern about the timeline and what was being proposed. And now we come to the deadline that they talked about at that meeting, and we don't have anybody that's able to come forward. We have some people that are supposedly working on it, but we don't know who they are, and they have not made contact with the church. Now, do you sense my frustration with this? So I feel like we've made a commitment to the church about a process that we outlined. I agree with some of the comments made by Jack Porter, and, you know, maybe we need to look at it on a long-term basis, but we also have to be sensitive and recognize property rights, and when do you get to a point where you cannot continue to push and force them to do something that maybe they don't want to do? So that's my conundrum. I mean, I guess I'm at the point where I, I believe that we need to allow them to go forward, but I would also ask that the, I think the message is loud and clear that there's a failure to communicate with the neighborhood. And I think that's, you know what, we can all point at everybody in that regard. I don't think anybody, everybody's to the blame for that. But if we're going to be successful in saving future structures and working together, we have to be able to sit down and have communication, and we don't have it right now.
Mr. Coleman?
Just, I, I appreciate Ms. Stilley's comments. I, I agree. I feel like through a process, I made a commitment that under certain circumstances, I would support the removal. I think we can't lose fact of the, lose track of the fact that the, the church agreed to spend whatever money they would have spent on the demolition towards moving it. They, they delayed their process by which they wanted. It's in my interest, as we've had testimony today, that people have been in there, it's been unlocked, and it's hard to keep people out because of the crumbling foundations. I don't want it up over the winter unless it's going to be saved. That's why I supported this period of time. And, and, you know, so my recommendation, manager, I thought we didn't even have to act because that was the parameters of our action. If you're suggesting that staff's looking for direction, I, I would move that given the consistent application of the agreement we had with St. Augustine's, we allow the Community Development Department to issue the appropriate permits for, as they've requested and I think applied for previously.
And again, make it very clear that the Prairie-style house would be saved, that that would, you're not requesting the intent is to restore and rehab that property.
You are going to restore it and rehab?
Yes, the Prairie.
The third one.
The third.
The third property, the Prairie-style architectural, will not be destroyed. That's not in our application. The church will use it for a function. They're not quite sure what at this time, but they do not intend to destroy that or ask for a demolition permit.
We have a, a motion, but I might make a couple of comments. I want to thank everybody from Mr. Lilis to Mr. Ball and, and others for their effort in this regard over this most recent past. But I think as Mr. Porter and Phil and David and everybody else has pointed out, this, this whole thing is, is a point of frustration for me. And, and I look over at Bob remembering back in the 90s when we were on a different commission that helped kind of guide this discussion, we thought at the time, and in good faith, thought that both Plymouth and St. Augustine's had, had pretty much committed to the preservation of these properties and the either use for their congregations or for residential purposes of those properties between 40th and 42nd and Grand and Ingersoll. And clearly, I between 40th and 42nd and Grand and Ingersoll. And clearly, I guess, that wasn't the long-term intent, although these two properties come sort of fall out of that a little bit because you didn't own those. But in the spirit of the understanding that we were going to try to maintain the residential character of the neighborhood, they fall exactly in it. And so, it's somewhat frustrating to know that. And I will also say that, I tell you this in the context of having come away from a meeting of mayors where we spent a few hours talking about exactly this, how do we preserve the historical fabric and character of our cities and without demolishing every last piece of it, and what it means, and listening to mayors from all over the country speak with some level of frustration about lack of commitment of some folks to do this, whether it be the corporate side or the citizen's side, and sometimes always is new is better, I guess. But it's also, I will say, almost, I had to laugh because our meeting was held in Oak Park. It has some very significant structures, residential character. And they were talking about their frustration that had been well documented over 150 years and of trying to preserve structures, and talking about the 1930s when they had these great Victorian houses all over the place, and some Colonials and others, which also are still standing well-preserved. And in the middle of all this, out of the lack of, I guess, respect for some of what was going on, some goofy guy by the name of Frank Lloyd Wright decided to put some houses up in the neighborhood that didn't exactly match the rest of them, and the outrage of the folks over that particular issue. But I think that, as we discussed the other night, Christine, you know, it's hard for us to judge today what is, you know, significant in terms of preservation. In the city of Des Moines, I, the number of structures that are over 50 years old in this city, I thought could be 40, 50 percent. Well, I think we discovered the other night, it's about 75 percent. And it's really unbelievable. Now, are they all significant? Probably not. But I think that we're making an effort to try to get our arms around what this is and what it represents, and know that sometimes it's not just age that determines the significance of structures. It has to do with a lot of other things, and which people that are probably much more expert than I are going to help us try to get our arms around. But it saddens me over, especially the one that Jack talked about, that 4005. I think that that structure is one of the few remaining with the portico over where the carriage used to drive under and let the owner off. And it's an absolute gorgeous house. Unfortunately, it's hard to recognize, as you have to go in and out of, what, five different apartments to try to sort out exactly what's going on in there. But it would have been really, after you take the enclosures off that had covered the porch and covered some of the other stuff that really was significant in that structure, it would be nice to save. However, I sort of fall on the side of everybody else. We tried to lay out a path, hoping that we could do it, knowing that the structures have been, maintenance has been deferred far too long. They are in a state of disrepair. The white structure is, I think, 411, is really not in good shape, and probably would be tough to preserve. But, so it saddens me to, I think, go along with this motion. I would like to-
David, do you have just a minute? I have a couple of questions for you.
Trying to figure out how to move this ahead. We do have a motion, Mr. Mahaffey, but I will recognize your-
Well, I was wondering if he had any idea, these people he mentioned that was looking into this, if he had any timeline at all.
You know, I was just trying to get a hold of the data, find out what the status is. He's a realtor, and he's found a couple of investors that are interested, and he just hasn't got the whole plan put together yet, so.
So it might be a long period of time then, is what-
You know, I-
Okay. What I'm thinking about, we did have one real good win. That was back when we had our previous city manager, and he wanted to wipe out the entire block between East Fourth and East Fifth on Locust. And look what we got there today. You know, it's just something that proves that we can use some of these older properties and make a real splash in the pan, so to speak, that really shows off our city. So, you know, if he had any idea on, you know, a couple of weeks or something, I would vote for that. But I guess we really don't have anything to rely on there, so. Thank you.
Five yes, two no.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Quick question. Is there a mayor's committee on demolition?
Actually, yes. Mrs. Hensley and I and Mr. Grease serve on that. And if you have some interest in it, we could probably find a way to get you involved in it. And if you want to, Amanda, back there, she'd be the one to get a hold of on that. All right, that takes us to item 51. Item 51 is an urban renewal development agreement with Randolph Apartments. So all of you preservationists, you know, hang around. Randolph Apartments Limited Partnership for the redevelopment of the Hotel Randolph, Earl and Lee Basquet, and Youngerman Block Buildings located at the northwest corner of Fourth Street and Court Avenue, Council Communication Number 13-447. Is there anybody here to speak to this agreement? Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, council members, one of the elements of this project that council has spoken about in the past has been the plight of the residents of this building. One of the directions that you've established early on here is that we develop a strong relocation program to address the needs of the residents there. I'm pleased to say that tonight on this agenda is a very good relocation program that's been put together by a team of individuals. Matt Anderson, Mary Naderback, Andrea Howar, others on city staff, Doug Romig, Chris Johansson, were involved with a group of people from the community to put together a very good plan. Primary Healthcare has been hired by George Sherman, who's the developer of the project. Primary Healthcare will work to coordinate and basically provide the services to the tenants within the building that will help them relocate to other facilities. And one of the really interesting things about this is that there's been a lot of discussion around this and some strong comments that have been provided about it. And I'm pleased to say at this point that what we have is a situation where there's broad support from the community at large in terms of how we're going to go about this. And I'll leave it to others to address some of the particulars, but just to indicate that as of right now, we're getting some very strong indications from some of the larger organizations in town that they will, in fact, help us, one way or the other, in carrying out the relocation plan for this project. The partnership, Gritty Des Moines Partnership, DCA, United Way, Polk County Community Foundation, Polk County Trust, others have all stepped up and said they are willing to work with us to implement the program. So without getting into all the details, I'd just tell you that it feels really good after the long process that we've gone through and with the strong direction that you gave us, council and mayor, that we have a relocation program. I'm pleased to say it's here. It's part of the action tonight, and I think we have with us some strong partners that will help ensure the success of the program.
Ms. Hensley?
I would just ask, Eric's been sitting out here patiently all night, so we need to give him a couple of minutes just to speak.
If you'd like.
I think you need to make a couple of comments, Eric. Talk about what you're... Because it is significant. I would just underscore what the city manager has shared with us regarding the support that we're getting from the community. And I know that we've all made contacts, and we've gone, the important item is, we listened. We've worked with the developer. Everybody's worked together to come up with the support that we need to ensure. And I think the most important thing that we didn't talk about, that the city manager did not make reference, was the fact that the plan is, is that they would be relocated as of the end of October, I think it's October 24th, which is really significant. And it's a plan that's not just to have them be moved, but it has some long-term sustainability to ensure that they're going to be successful in their new environment. Did I give you enough time to get it pulled up?
Yeah, thank you. Eric Birmaster, Executive Director, Polk County Housing Trust Fund, 108 Third Street, Suite 350, Des Moines. The Randolph redevelopment, and now I'll get on my soapbox, the Randolph redevelopment is something that is frankly precedent-setting going forward. There have been a lot of people, and despite the fact that you think this is, I do enjoy coming and listening to these presentations, is part of a growing concern in the community regarding affordable housing. And redevelopment and displacement of affordable housing units in the name of economic development and in the name of this kind of growth is something that the city is and will continue to address over the years and will continue to address with the help of the community. Not only organizations like the trust fund, but philanthropic organizations like United Way. And the fact is that I've indicated to some of you that probably talking about, and I heard somebody talk about the Grand Ingersoll Corridor, that's the next challenge. We have quite a bit of affordable housing in the Grand Ingersoll Corridor that we need to look at what kind of policy this community is going to set. And I've taken a look at the agreement. I understand, I think, what the agreement says. I hope I understand it, which is that there is a commitment from the developer and the city to see that the individuals in the Randolph are relocated. There looks to be a way to fund that, even if the folks in the community that some folks have talked to don't come forward with money, because it looks like, as I read the agreement, that the cost of relocation will be included in the development cost for the project. The Polk County Housing Trust Fund stands ready to help by funding the necessary infrastructure, I'll call it, for the location of additional housing units for these folks. It frankly is something that we need in the community, and Primary Healthcare is set to do that. We do have resources to help fund that particular activity, not only for this, but also for the coordinated intake program of the response to the homeless issues that we have as well. So anyway, I'd be glad to take any questions about our particular commitment. But again, this is a wake-up call for the city of Des Moines. And we need, as a community, to develop a policy that can guide this council and frankly, guide developers. I did it for 30 years. Guide developers coming into this community that says, if you are going to come into our community and displace affordable housing, no matter what condition it's in, and I'm not here to defend the Randolph and its condition, but it is affordable housing. And as a community, we have a responsibility to replace that housing. And we will continue to work hard to get that done.
Thank you.
Coleman?
Just a couple of things. Eric, we appreciate the work of your organization. I want to particularly point out that Polk County is a major funder of what you do. And the one comment I would say, and I'm not chastising you because I know you agree with it, but in order for us to sustain the level of commitment that we really need to build a healthy community for especially the people seeking affordable housing, we have to be able to do it throughout the metro area and not just here in the city of Des Moines, where we have many areas where developers are interested, but there's a high concentration of those kinds of units. Providing these units is one of the best things that we do, and we'll be thankful. We did it 20 years from now. Concentrating them is one of the worst things that we do, and we'll really regret it in 20 years. The second thing I want to point out is, I think most people know we have the Homeless Coordinating Council. Several of us serve on it. I've been lucky to be the chair of it. When this came before us in April, just to put into context what we have been doing and talking about, we anticipated, the blue letter, the manager's report, said that it would be back for final consideration in early June. And I can tell you, between April and last week, most of that time, I had every intention of voting no on this project, because I thought that we were shifting an issue that we have in the community from one corner, and we were shifting it to many, maybe 100 different corners that was going to create a real problem for the most at-risk people in our community that have to pay their rent with cash every week and other ways. And so, the work that's been done by Primary Healthcare mostly, and with the development team at Sherman, has changed the context of this. Mr. Birmaster said that this is precedent-setting. I agree with that. And I think this is a really good precedent, that when we have development, it is going to be hand-in-hand with the private sector, with the developers, with the city, and other interested parties to make sure that we do this right. The number that is in the kind of pro forma about what is being spent to help relocate these individuals is really just what's spent at the starting line. But when they get tapped into programs like Anomones Shelter Plus Care and other programs that will really help them, they're going to have that assistance month after month after month, and hopefully be able to build a better life for them than what was provided for them in, you know, day-to-day rentals at a Randolph hotel that at best was tired, but at worst was a horrific place for us to store our neighbors. So I'm supportive of this.
I think we have a motion to-
I'll move 51.
Approve. To Eric's-
Mr. Mayor, could I speak for a moment? I'm a citizen, and a citizen of Des Moines for 35 years.
I'd like to have you step up to the platform here, as we've asked everybody to. Absolutely. So come ahead.
Right here, sir.
My name is Frank Ingersoll. I'm a veteran. I'm retired, and this city doesn't know what they're doing. You put more people, I'm talking about older people, out of their homes into nursing homes with their children, can't afford than any group of people in the entire state of Iowa. And don't blink. You don't qualify for higher office because you don't know what's on the penny. I'll leave this for you to read. On Lincoln's head side, it reads, "In God we trust. You've proven by your votes over and over again that you're not a friendly community to Christians. As a Christian nation, Christians won World War II. We fought for you, and you don't know what you're doing. The common business practice is, if you don't have the money, you don't spend it. You hire this man for $250,000 a year to cover all your mistakes. You pour more money down a rat hole than any group of people I've ever seen in my life, and you don't even know, after all these years of having Christians in your town, what the Bible actually says. I'm done. I have a homestead exemption. I have a veteran's exemption. I also- I also have 21 years of paying on the same house. And you know what that gave me? Gave me proof that Polk County and you folks spend money that you don't have. You violate the state laws of how much money that you can increase for taxes every year. Is this about taxes? No, this is about, there's a dime. That's 11 cents. I'm going to leave it here. It's all I have in my pocket. That's for your budget. This man can account for that. He knows real money. You play games with money. You play games with naps. You play games with ruins. You came, played with rich people and who do you hurt? You've hurt the common man. And when the common man gets old enough, or the common woman gets old enough, all her folks, if she's not a Christian, if she doesn't have people around her, you put her in a nursing home and then she's well on the way to the hospital. And guess what? You shortened their lives. I am tired of this. I'm not going to come here. This is the third time I came here. This is on the budget. You don't know what you're doing budgetarily. Two, you don't know what Christianity is all about. You think homosexuality is a joke. It's written right in there. Read what Jesus says and if you have seen Jesus, you've seen God. It's written right in there that homosexuality is one of the worst things on the planet and God hates it. Read the coin. "In God We Trust." I am a Christian. I'm not coming back here. Sit down, gentlemen. I'm not mad yet.
Okay. I think-
I didn't ask for, I didn't ask for any comments. You are not qualified to be governor. You folks are not qualified to govern the people of Des Moines. You need to get your act straight monetarily. You need to ask the city manager. You haven't done anything fiscally responsible for years. Do it. See you, Skip.
Glad he's your friend.
All right. So, I think he's done. We have a vote in progress. Mr. Mahaffey?
That's the funniest debate I've ever seen.
Six oh. We hope you all enjoyed this evening. Could we have a motion to adjourn?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please sit adjourned.